I hereby call this meeting of the Richmond Public School Board to order.
Thank you. Are you ready?
Yes, go ahead and do your announcement.
Angie, we're having trouble hearing you if you're speaking.
Is she there?
Matthew said she fell off.
Okay. She says she's trying to reconnect. All right.
I'm simultaneous translation being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom. The link, once logged in, click interpretation and select Spanish to listen to the interpretation, to speak slowly and deliberately to allow for accurate translation. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting, point two, and in compliance, December 2020 dash zero nine three, April 20th, 2020. The notice of the meeting stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would aid the public review there and the link was provided in the notice. Um, public comment, public comments could be submitted to the clerk at speakers@rvaschools.net and the comments would be shared with the board and posted to board docs. The agenda for the meeting, or that's to the R.
Angie, we can't hear you. And now I don't see me.
I see you, Linda.
Oh, good.
Linda?
Yes.
This is Jonathan. Can you just send a note that she doesn't, if perhaps Matthew or someone could send her the link?
Yeah, also Liz Dorr, I got that same message. But I'm still not getting my full picture on Zoom.
Linda, are you touching the, um, the arrow where participants?
I don't see the AR for participants. I've only got this.
It's four little bodies. I should say bodies, 16 participants. I see you very clearly. You're, you're, you're big.
All I've got right now is you, this tiny little bit. No, nobody else. Okay, Angie says she just resent the link. I don't. I don't know where everybody is. Matthew?
You know a storm is coming up.
Yeah, and Ms. Wilson says she's having technical difficulties. She got knocked out again. Matthew?
Yes.
Can you, I, I only can see one little teeny tiny rectangle of Zoom. I can't get the whole thing. Should I try to get in again?
I'm not sure. You may want to try that.
Okay. Ah, never mind. There you are. Okay, and there's Angie. Can you?
Uh huh, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
Where are we? Did we finish the announcement?
Yes, I did.
Okay, then let's have our roll call.
Okay. Ms. Paige? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Present.
Dr. Sipini?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
She, again, excuse me, Ms. Pick, Mrs. Dorr still didn't receive the email to get on the Zoom.
I just sent it to her.
I know.
So did Matthew.
She says she didn't get it. I'm gonna let her know that Matthew and she, Matthew, okay.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
And I also heard the link. Madam Chair, you do have a quorum. You have six board members present.
Okay, and we've got two of them trying to get in. So, um, we will go on to the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Burke.
I'd like to make a motion at this time regarding the agenda.
Okay.
Right, my motion is that to add under three, section three, please add 3.05 to change the date for the school board meeting on the first day of school, which is September the 8th. And I'd like to make the motion, number one, to amend the agenda and add 3.05 to include discussion of new date for board meeting.
Second.
And Ms. Page has seconded.
Okay.
Liz is on the public link.
They just thought they just promoted me to analyst.
Okay, okay, nice to see you, Ms. Dorr.
I still didn't receive any of the emails, so I don't know what's going on.
Okay, we've just had a motion by Ms. Burke to amend the agenda to section three, 3.05, to consider changing the date of our next school board meeting. Is there any discussion? Okay. So, we're just voting on adding it to the agenda. We're not voting on the item itself, just adding it to the agenda. Jonathan?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Cheryl, do you have an alternate date proposed?
I'm looking at my calendar now. Is this the appropriate time for that?
Now, let's just talk about the different dates when we get to that item, if that's okay, Mr. Young. Right now, let's just see if we can add it to the agenda.
That, that's fine.
She just, we're not gonna put a date in it at this point. Because we want to hear from the administration. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Then let's have the vote.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sipini?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh.
Thank you. So now, we need to vote to amend, to adopt the agenda as amended. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so Ms. Page moved and Ms. Burke seconded that we approved the agenda as amended. So discussion, okay, let's go for the vote.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sipini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve the corrected minutes of the July ninth school board meeting, the minutes of the August 3rd school board meeting, and the minutes of the August 11th education compact meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Page. So Ms. Dorr moved that we approved the minutes and Ms. Page has seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's go for the vote.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sipini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Now, before we go to public information, I would like to see, tell the board that we have received a great deal of public comment. And unless I see a consensus not to, we will limit public comment being read for one minute and two hours total. So if you all can give me a thumbs up, or nod a head, or shake or put thumbs down if you disagree with that. Well. I get a nod. Do I have more nods?
Madam Chair, when we, um.
Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we noticed it, what did, what did we specify at that point?
We did not specify. We said one to three minutes depending on the length of the comments received. Oh, there's Ms. Gibson. So, all right, then we'll do the one minute and max, and stop after two hours. Okeydoke. Now go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Andre Niasse. Although it is apparent that a recommendation is being made to get rid of SROs, I would like to comment on why SSOs have become the topic of removal as well. There were 11 individuals who spoke about the outright removal of SSOs and SROs, and while that number is small, it is alarming. The question that I ask is that after so many countless hours, days, months, and years, why are we messing with a system that works? Why are we messing with the lives of innocent officers from both spectrums, meaning SSOs and SROs? Why has this become the center of attention because of a few who have decided to make statements instead of positive dialogue and consultation with those who work on the front lines? Have we really lost respect for our fellow RPS family? Carmen Terrell. I'm wondering what's being done about teachers that want to teach online, but instead of teaching from home, teach from the school. A teacher was telling me that once again, the lie about not enough funding when two new schools just got built. But anyway, for health screeners to check the teachers every time, one comes in their room to teach and hold virtual meetings. So if there are nurses that are checking temperatures on the students that come in physically, why can't this happen for them? Some teachers can't afford internet along with computers and other technology and other supplies needed to teach. I mean, it's a lot to take the stuff to their house along with just not having the equipment to teach online. Also, what's the deal on high school credits and transcripts? I mean, there are students in middle school learning high school subjects and acing it, but when it comes to their credits to be applied for high school, it's lost. Bryant Moore. Spartan Academy has been a big success with helping my two daughters, Ayana and Tayana, mentally and physically. The staff there show so much love and support to our children. They take the time to actually help them and teach them. I'd rather have my children there than put back into public schools. Academically, their grades have been brought up over there. They've learned how to be calm and to have patience. Since my daughter's been there, I've seen no more fighting, referrals, or bad phone calls. As a parent, I love Spartan Academy because they showed me the potential and intelligent, intelligence my children have. My children love that, that school and it makes them happy. When they got sent back to regular public schools, they insisted on going back to Spartan Academy. They have outstanding norms helping the kids to become better students. They do fun activities. Olivia Chappelle. Good evening. I would like a little of your time to express what Spartan Academy means to me. I am a single mom to eight wonderful children. My oldest is 17. He attends Fashion Center. My next is 14. She attends Spartan. My daughter's 10. She attends Westover Hills. And the last five all attend Bellevue Elementary School. Now you have a little more insights of my family. What Spartan means to me. Well, do I start? I'm proud to tell others, my smart and intelligent child attends Spartan. Many think it's a school for bad kids or kids that RPS has given up on, but let's be clear, it's not. It's a home away from home, family away from blood family. Since my daughter has attended here, my phone doesn't ring every day asking me to pick her up. Sonora Powell. I am writing this letter to inform how I feel about Spartan Academy. I love that school. It's a great school to have your kids. I have two kids that go to that school and teachers and staff at that school help these kids much, as much as they can. My kids love their school to the utmost. I really feel that the teachers at Spartan Academy teach these kids better than the regular school teachers. Not only are they teaching them to do good, but they also are teaching them how to become young men and women. Spartan Academy is one of the best schools and I recommend any child to go there. My kids always come home every day from school saying how much they love their teachers and school. They said the teachers help when you need them to. If you don't understand your work, they would break it down to you so you can understand the work. I love that school so much and everyone that's in Spartan Academy. I will do anything in my power to keep this school open.
Ms. Wilson, I think we skipped a couple?
Yes. Did we?
Back to Aqwanapek.
Okay. Thank you. So after Bryant Moore, there was Olivia Chappelle.
Right.
My page jumped. I apologize. Okay, Aqwanapek, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
My name is Aqwanapek. I am the mother of Shante Johnson, a student at Spartan Academy. My daughter has been a student at the school since her ninth year of high school and she's now going into her senior year. A lot of people look for, at this, a lot of people look at the school as just an alternative school for kids with behavior issues, but I look at it differently. I look at every staff at that school as family. They put love, time, and a lot of patience into each child in that building. I've seen firsthand, some of these kids, my child included, has a lot of underhanded issues and the staff does not just brush them off. They all take time and talk with them and find out what is really going on. Honestly, if I had it my way, I would pick Spartan Academy as the school Shante stays at until she graduates. Her grades are much better than before and she's learning a lot of self-control. Tamika Gu. Spartan Academy is such a more positive and effective school for my children. I watched it empower my children to raise their grades in general. Not only do the teachers and staff really give their all in ensuring that the kids stay out of trouble, they help them focus on better themselves as individuals. Public school sometimes is very difficult due to the violence in our communities. Taking a break and coming to a more structured environment is best for my children. Monique Monfort. Spartan is an exceptional program for children that are struggling in large class settings with behavioral problems and of mental health. I currently have a 16-year-old that attends and my oldest attended the same program. She passed with honors, graduated, and furthered her education in nursing. I am very familiar with most of the staff because I've worked with them in other schools regarding my children's academics and behaviors. Therefore, I have a good relationship with the staff. Spartan Academy meets children where they're at and builds, build off their strengths. Also, they include the parents, accept suggestions, and keep us updated with our child's progress. I appreciate Spartan Academy, its programs, dedicated, devoted, and compassionate staff. It's a good program. Natasha Baker. I am writing to express my gratitude towards the staff at Spartan Academy. My son has been a student since November 2019. In the time he was there before the closure and after, the staff has worked diligently to accommodate both his individual needs and support our family. When my son was first placed at the academy, I felt embarrassed and ashamed. I did not see how his behaviors were going to improve at a school with students that displayed similar behavior, behaviors. Every step of the way, Spartan Academy has made a feel welcome from scheduling orientation, attending orientation, the initial week at school, and throughout. They have transformed my mindset and opinion of alternative education. This is not a place where children are put and forgotten about. The students are nurtured, groomed, and motivated to strive for the best. I am grateful that he has positive role models. Did I read Sonora Powell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Lakeisha Carfon. I am the mother of Dante Wilkinson.
I would really like to thank you for all of what you've done in being active with my son throughout the rest of his curriculum year. I am pleased with how my son has been able to learn so much.
Angie?
From all distractions.
Angie?
Yes.
It's become difficult to hear you. Did you change a setting?
No. I haven't done anything.
You're, you're not loud enough.
Okay, I will try. All I can say is that whatever you all are doing there to support my son in the manner you have, keep up the good work because he seems more optimistic about his future and has been very proud of his progress. So I thank you, thank you, and thank you. Leslie Motley. I am Kayel Motley's mother. He is a seventh grader at Spartan Academy. This letter is to show my appreciation for the hard work and dedication of the teachers and the school as a whole for taking the time to help my son. He was able to succeed there and grow academically. I'm grateful that he has given, that he was given the opportunity to work with the Spartan Academy staff and receive all of their guidance and structure. He talks about his teachers a lot and misses them all. I would like to thank them for everything. The Bennett family. I am the parent of Desire Bennett and I just wanted to say that my baby girl coming to Spartan Academy was a big turn considering her coming from a not-so-good situation. Spartan Academy played a big role in helping Desire display her leadership skills despite her age. It showed her how to take responsibility for what she had done and turn it into something that will make a difference. She now knows that leadership is not only about the role, it's always about the goal behind it. Anson Richardson.
I went to Spartan Academy and it changed my life around really quick. It was the best thing that ever happened to me. I don't get in trouble anymore and I stay out of the way. Spartan Academy showed me how to be a leader, not a.
Shante Johnson. Spartan Academy has helped me become a, become better since I arrived there two years ago. I can focus on what I need to focus on without being distracted by the wrong things. I can put my foot down towards making the right and best decisions for myself. I also learned how to communicate, talking to people in a respectful way. The staff has pushed me every day to become a better person, more respectful, and more responsible. They also helped me deal with my anger and helping me control it more, which I have got better at doing because of their help. It wasn't easy, but when you have multiple people there to support you, it is very much possible. Everyone has worked as a team to help me get through my bad times and troubled ways and I very much appreciate every single bit of help I have received from the Spartan Academy staff.
Ayana Moore. I attend Spartan Academy. I love every single staff so much. I feel like going to Spartan Academy was the best option for me. I was always focused in school and on the right track. I get all the support I need. I'm very comfortable and have a great relationship with the staff, especially Hawkins. When I need a break or I'm upset, I can talk to him about anything. I can be myself when I'm in school comfortably. They don't judge me for why I attend there. We're more like family. It's us against anything and anybody. They make sure I'm doing what I'm supposed to do out of trouble and working hard. I couldn't ask for a better school family. We are a team.
Mrs. Cooper. I'm writing to commend and praise the administration at RAS and the Spartan Academy. I'm a product of RPS and to see the growth and the positive effect that the administration has put into place is nothing short of amazing. Mr. Lamont Trotter and his team have proven to be positive models which other schools can learn from. They have literally improved in behavior. 16 arrests in 2013 to zero in 2019.
Sixteen arrests in two thousand thirteen to zero in two thousand nineteen. Academics, increased SOL scores, and graduation rates. This is very commendable and should be mentioned. Kudos to RAS, Spartan Academy, Mr. Trotter, and the administration team for making a positive impact in the lives of RPS students and to our future leaders. Cheyenne Morgan. I think my experience at Spartan Academy was probably the best thing to happen for me. I had a lot of support and guidance. I needed to get where I needed to be and prepare for obstacles the world may bring. Jaquavis Hawkins. What I like about the Spartan Academy is the staff and structure. I wasn't expecting it to be like this. All I heard was, oh, CCP is crazy up in there. But once I got to Spartan Academy, it wasn't that at all. The classes were smaller and I was, and I wasn't distracted. I loved how no matter what I was sent there for, I wasn't judged, and I still was expected to make good grades or we, or we'd get a bad rating for the week. I even became a pledge before I transitioned back to my old school. Thank you for helping me to grow. Unaja Womack. You all pushed us to be the very best that we can be, and for that, we all excelled tremendously. So thank you again for the help personally and academically. I appreciate how it wasn't always just about the classroom. It was so much bigger than that. Me personally, I've been going here on and off since ninth grade. I have had some of my best high school years at Spartan Academy. I've grown in ways I thought wasn't possible at the time. Spartan Academy helped mold me into the person I am. I've always been bright, but with a push and lots of encouragement, I embraced it for all. And for that, I'll always love you all. Tazian Cheeks. What I love most about Spartan Academy is the love that I feel from the staff, and I feel like I actually learned there. They don't make you feel like a bad child, and they will support you with things outside of school too. They helped me get my first job and even took us on field trips. I love y'all and thank you for everything. Destiny Scott. I graduated from Spartan Academy and John Marshall. Some people might not think the same about Spartan Academy, but me, myself, I truly loved it. When I first started at Spartan Academy before graduating, my head wasn't on right at all. If it wasn't for the teachers, the love that they showed, and the support that they had from me, I wouldn't be the PCA nurse that I am today. Spartan Academy doesn't just have regular teachers and staff. Those teachers and staff members care about us doing well in the future. No other teachers in a regular school would do the things that they do for us. April Cooper. Spartan Academy helped me get my GPA up. I am graduating next year. At my zone school, I would ask that my teachers didn't understand. I think it's because I had so many classmates doing so many things, they didn't have the time to spend with me as an individual. The size of our Spartan Academy classes make it easier to have a conversation about the work. I feel like we need more opportunity to learn and see options after high school. Stenyah Battle. I am a student at Spartan Academy. I really like this school for many reasons. In Spartan Academy, you are not ignored. Your problems are always important to the teachers and staff. I can talk to anyone if I need help. They even helped me change my schedule so I could feel safe in my classes. They care. The teachers really push you to do better, but never make you feel bad about needing help. My personal issues were taken care of by the people at this school. I feel important there. Thank you. Kevon Mosley. I am a student at Spartan Academy. I have been there since the fall of two thousand nineteen. I like this school very much. The teachers are very supportive and everything. At this school, I had a chance to be part of student government. I feel good about myself in Spartan Academy. Whenever I have a problem, there is someone to help me. Thank you. Vantasia Holloway. Spartan Academy is a great school, at least to me. I can't wait to go back, even though I feel like they're stricter, but it helps me stay on track. The teachers actually teach and have high expectations of us. Even though I'm missing my phone at school, I feel it helps me not to be distracted in the classroom. Once I got used to Spartan Academy, I loved it. Kelyia Jordan. I am a senior student at Spartan Academy. I like this school very much. Everyone is so supportive and understanding. The teachers push you to do better in class and help you with your social skills. I like how there are no cell phones to cause a distraction during learning time. I have really enjoyed my time at Spartan Academy. Portence Mitchell-Laberty. School board members, we appreciate your taking time to consider our request. We understand that you are quite busy dealing with the Corona crisis, and we only ask that when things calm down, that you please consider our request. We have tried to keep our comments to less than three minutes reading time. We have been patient and we will continue to be so, but we hope to succeed and we will persist in our efforts. I think I speak for us all when I say how much we appreciate the efforts of all our graduates and educators in their efforts to keep us together. Dennis Mallory stands out as the one who is always emailing us, posting on Facebook, and organizing our gatherings, which are always delightful. Dennis Mallory. I was born in the Creighton Court projects within a five-minute walking distance to Armstrong High School. During the year of nineteen sixty-eight, two tragedies occurred. The assassinations of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Senator Robert F. Kennedy. From that sadness came some joy when John F. Kennedy High School was built. When the doors first opened in nineteen sixty-eight, we seventh graders transferred there from the overcrowded Woodville Elementary School for the purpose of filling empty classrooms at Kennedy. We participated in selecting the school mascot, colors, and the alma mater. We continued our stay through the eighth grade. At the start of our freshman year, the nineteen seventy school busing laws went into effect. So some of us were bused to Armstrong while the rest of us stayed at Kennedy. Diane Ritchie-Nylam. I spent my entire thirty-six career, thirty-six-year career with RPS at twenty-three hundred Cool Lane from fall nineteen sixty-nine through two thousand four at John F. Kennedy High, plus the first year of the merger turned takeover. I entered the halls of JFK, JFK as a twenty-two-year-long Woodville graduate who really had no clue what to expect. I retired having been recognized as a national award-winning teacher in both geography and economics, as well as a REV award winner. I credit my experiences at Kennedy for all of the accolades. I have found a second family of faculty who mentored me and students whom I could mentor. The needs of my students and their support pushed me to further my education so that I could fully meet those needs. Long before financial literacy became a buzzword, the Kennedy administration. Helen Jones. The JFK Kennedy class, I'm sorry, the John F. Kennedy class of nineteen sixty-nine has fifty years of dedicated pride, respect, and fond memories. We were embraced with great leadership and teachers striving to create the highest level of education. These teachers encouraged us as students to reach our full potential. It is because we are the pioneers of this school that we graciously ask that JFK High School regain its original name. This school incorporates our love, respect, and struggles. Ivy Benjamin. As our school building still stands at twenty-three hundred Cool Lane, we still remain prideful of its origin. We, the class of nineteen sixty-nine, the first graduating class, felt stripped of all that was ours at one point. Our school colors, our school song, they no longer existed. We no longer had our school. Basically, the name change was not done in a fair manner. We were never made aware of any official meeting to rename our school, and we never had any say-so. So it is with great pride and love that we would be so honored to have our school name back, John F. Kennedy High School. Rosalyn Washington Nelson. We, the class of nineteen sixty-nine, have always had a great camaraderie and have stayed connected through the years. Reflecting on our sixty-nine class, even though we were small in numbers, we stood proud of our new alma mater. We just celebrated our fiftieth class reunion, October twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. And our memory book for this occasion is an appreciation page dedicated to Senator Henry L. Marsh III for his involvement with JFK High School as he installed the president of our first student council. Even though the name is now Armstrong, we, the class of sixty-nine, for the past three years have collaborated with senior sponsor Frank Streets to help one senior with their, with their class dues. We still care about our school and its mission. Despite the passage of time, we want to maintain the legacy and foundation. John Bailey. We, the nineteen sixty-nine graduating class of John F. Kennedy High School, have something to say. Back in nineteen sixty-eight, we stood as pioneers about to explore a new territory and a new school. Not since nineteen sixty had a new high school been built in the city of Richmond, and not since Armstrong High, High School established for African-American students. We stepped for varied reasons to be a part of this new school, this new experience. We, as seniors, led the way in choosing school colors, scarlet and gold, a school mascot, Cougars, spelled with a K. We were saying at eighteen-years-old, thought that was quite clever. We did our part to try to make John F. Kennedy a good place to go to high school. The principal, assistant principals, guidance counselors, teachers, office staff, janitors, cafeteria staff. Lynn Christian. The class of nineteen sixty-nine was the first graduating class. We were so disappointed when our school name was taken from us. We hold our school name dearly with pride and dignity. We, the Kennedy Cougars, class of nineteen sixty-nine, thank you very much for your support in this matter. John Archer. I, John Archer, class of nineteen sixty-nine, would like to see the school name restored to its original name, John F. Kennedy High School. I truly support this cause. Jocelyn Mary. Gratitude is extended for the opportunity afforded to communicate referencing reclaiming the name of John Fitzgerald Kennedy High School. I am a retired educational administrator who received her educational roots and foundation from the strong instruction provided at JFKHS. My sister and I were graduates from two of the original classes, nineteen seventy and nineteen seventy-one, respectively. When we opened in nineteen sixty-eight, students were tasked with, with selecting school colors, mascot, and song. Administrators and students took great pride and esteem in establishing groundwork with blazing trails for dear JFK, ironically, our school song. As we observed during my higher education and employment years, that pride continued with an abundance of noted educational strides, pursuits, and goals. Dale Clark. I was a member of the class of seventy-two. When I was transferred from Armstrong High School to JFK Kennedy in the tenth grade, I was quite concerned about how I would fit in. As soon as I entered JFK, I knew I was home. The entire school was very welcoming, and I made lots of new friends. The principal's door was always open, the teachers really cared about the students, and my classmates welcomed me with open arms. I am proud to be a JFK graduate and wish the name could be restored that I may show my grandkids where I graduated and share with them how JFK left a lasting impression on my life and continues to do so. JFK for life. Larry Williford. I graduated in nineteen seventy-two from John F. Kennedy. I was one of the few people who attended the last hearing before our school's building, building was stolen and its name was erased from history. After seeing an article in the paper only the day before the city council meeting, I joined several Kennedy alumni and made an effort to stop what seemed to be a done deal. I feel that this change was only achieved because of one candidate who was in the hundreds of Armstrong High School. He did everything to keep what was going to take place in the dark. He even had the Armstrong one that prepared and presented.
It's hard to hear you. Switched.
Okay. Only a few Kennedy alumni were there because we just happened to see the article in the newspaper. There was no need to include anyone from Kennedy in the process. Adam Jones Williams. I attended John F. Kennedy for four years, graduating in June nineteen seventy-two. I loved my school then, as I do now. Our school had a warm and loving environment, firmly focused on learning. We had the best teachers, administrators, and classmates. We were disciplined and nurtured and were expected to become productive citizens. I am proud to be a Kennedy alum and would be so happy and proud to have my alma mater return to JFK High School. Thank you.
Angie. Angie, you really are fading out. Would you like to have someone else take over the reading?
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Lily, can you see them?
Yes, I can see them.
Would you mind taking over?
No problem.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I end where, where did we end? With Valerie Jennings Thomas?
Yes, we have not read Valerie Jennings Thomas.
Yes.
And can you, do you have a timer?
Yes, I'm gonna try to do both at the same time, so bear with me, but I will, I can take it over.
Thank you.
Valerie Jennings Thomas. I am a member of the class of nineteen seventy-three. Many of us were born and raised in Churchill, and many of us were products of single-parent homes. Our mothers worked, and many of us took care of younger siblings. That was all that we knew. Upon our entering the halls of John F. Kennedy High School, we had so many life-changing experiences. I knew nothing of education or vocation past high school. The teachers ment, teachers mentors taught us that there was no, there was more to life than what we knew existed in the housing projects where many of us resided. They taught us about what self-esteem, the will to want more, and the feeling of accomplishment felt like. Many of those teachers and mentors are gone now, but those experiences at John F. Kennedy gave so many of us the opportunity to become doctors, teachers, entrepreneurs, and so forth. So many dreams were fulfilled. We are asking that the name of our dear alma mater be reinstated, and we hope that our school will continue to be as rich and experienced for those who follow in our footsteps as it was for us. Robert Hewit, Hewlett Jr., excuse me. I'm privileged to say that I am, I am an alumnus and graduate of the nineteen seventy-three class of John F. Kennedy High School. I will try to be brief, but I would like to express to the board what's in my heart and mind related to my memories of my dear high school and why the original name of John F. Kennedy should once again be placed on the front of the building that stands at twenty-three hundred Cool Lane. I grew up in the east end of Richmond, in the city's public housing, Fairfield Court and Creighton Court. My family and I resided only three short blocks from the front entrance of John F. Kennedy High School. Like so many families in public housing, I was raised by a single working parent. The school's close proximity made it safe and convenient for my mother and my three younger siblings. I feel that when we lost our. Katrina Cumension. I moved to Richmond from the Virgin Islands in two thousand and one. I went to a, I went from a small private school to a public school for the first time, and I was, to say the least, overwhelmed. But by the end of the two and a half years, JFK was not just my school, it was my home. It was the place where I made lifelong friends, a place where dedicated educators prepared me for William and Mary, the place where my band director sat me down to tell me I was worth more than a fellow, than the fellow I was seeing, and a place where, a place I was heartbroken to leave at graduation. This is where I had some of my, of the most challenging and rewarding times of my life. This school was a symbol of how young people of color have the ability to achieve more than their circumstances would seem to allow. Rita Ray Miller. Named for John Fitzgerald Kennedy, the thirty-fifth President of the United States, our school, John F. Kennedy, JFK, opened its doors at twenty-three hundred Cool Lane, September third, nineteen sixty-eight. The opening brought much excitement to the East End community as students from all over gathered to walk, ride buses, or carpool to this brand-new school. Then in two thousand and four, with very little discussion and the strike of a pen, our school was no more. Its existence vanished. Even today, there remain unanswered questions regarding the decision, which are mostly, how could this happen, and why did it happen so heretly? Many alumni who were born and reared in this city sadly have no school building to claim. We can move past the loss of an elementary and middle school, but the elimination of our high school name leaves a deep scar. Garnett Dunford. I am a member of the class of nineteen seventy-four. My classmates at Kennedy and I had something in common. We had been to the only one other school before starting at, we had been to only one other school before starting at Kennedy. These similarities ended there. While their school was in the East End, mine, West Hampton, was in the West End. It was an integrated school, having been one of the three original Richmond Public Schools to be desegregated in nineteen sixty-one at the start of my kindergarten year. Admittedly, there were only a couple of black students in each classroom for my nine years there, but it did pave the way for me attending John F. Kennedy as a white student. I was excited to be at school, at a school named for a modern man, someone whom I remembered from my early childhood. On the first day of my freshman year there, which was the first day of crosstown busing, we were greeted not only by fellow students and teachers, but also by the media. Mallory Simpson. I am a seventy-five graduate of John F. Kennedy, and I was a proud member of the Black Beret National Championship Drill Team. We all know that change is a part of life and that it can be accepted if done properly. To accept a change that has happened with total disregard to the rights and feelings of one of the involved parties might be accepted but not forgotten. This is especially of someone with the spirit of a cougar. Please give us our school back. Rosalyn Jackson. My name is Rosalyn Jackson. I would love to see the name of our school, John F. Kennedy High School, restored and the name Armstrong removed. I am a member of the class of nineteen seventy-six. I thank you in advance for considering our request. Deborah Taylor. I first started hearing about John F. Kennedy as a young girl. The more I was exposed to his work and values, the more I admired him. He was, in fact, a great president of our United States, and he stood out from the rest. So you can only imagine that feeling the moment I walked through the doors of JFK in nineteen seventy-four. It felt right, and I felt inspired and honored. After all, the name on the building represented a man who supported civil rights, the Civil Rights Movement, and the advancement of all people, especially people who look like me. In John F. Kennedy's inaugural speech, he spoke of the need for all Americans to be active citizens. We were active students in our learning, participated in academic, social, and sports activities, and we were inspired to be great. Deborah Williams Morris. There are events that happen in our lifetime, moments when we can remember exactly where we were and what we were doing. One of these moments was the assassination of Martin Luther King Jr., and another, of course, the terrorist attack on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Another one of the, another of those days was the day John F. Kennedy was assassinated, November twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three. I was thirteen years old and attending East End Junior High School, as it was called back then, sitting in my history class with my teacher, Mrs. Simpson. She was one of the sweetest people you ever want to meet, but that day devastated her. There was an announcement over the intercom that the President of the United States had been shot. We could see her getting upset. She sat down at her desk. Minutes later, they came back on and said that the President of the United States was dead. Greg Carter. I was part of the class of nineteen seventy, and I want our school's name restored through a fair and thorough process. I went to Mosby Middle School through the ninth grade. When I went to Armstrong, there was no discussion about our namesake other than that he had been a Union General. When I went to Kennedy, I was proud to be part of a new venture, proud to be in a school named after a civil rights hero, and we were told all about our namesake. Kennedy High School was a breath of fresh air, and we could be a part of a new tradition. Whenever I go home to Richmond and I go by the school, I cannot call it Armstrong. We were pioneers, as we said, we were in our second-year groove when we were when we were twelfth graders establishing something new and special. I was a senior class president, again, proud to be a part of a noble effort. Cortance Mitchell Liberty. I was in the first group of teachers to go to Kennedy in nineteen sixty-eight. It was a brand-new building, and it was intended to serve several purposes. First, we were to eliminate crowding at other schools, but more importantly, we were to serve as a model school of sorts. Our principal, Dr. Arnold Henderson, was revered, and he was allowed to, for the most part, pick his staff. Thus, I was surrounded by the best and brightest, which was an awesome experience as a first-year teacher raised in tight water and one of, and only one of the thirteen white teachers in the building. I was stunned by what I saw when I moved to the capital of the Confederacy, but that only confirmed my desire to help. I had made a decision, made my decision when Dr. King was assassinated, that I would be, that I would try to be part of the solution when I applied to work at Richmond City Schools. Isaiah Tyler. I have been attending Spartan Academy since I was in the sixth grade. While being at Spartan Academy, I learned how to control my anger and use my words to communicate. I have improved a lot, and my mom is very proud of me. I just want to thank all of my teachers for helping me along the way. Jennifer Sarat. I am writing to again urge the school board and superintendent Cameris to continue to listen to those students most marginalized and impacted by policing presence and policies in the schools. I want to remind folks that it is important to prioritize the voices most harmed. We need to continue to listen to our youth's voices who are leading the conversations about the negative impact and effects of policing in their lives. I know there, there are several items for consideration this evening. One, RPS should end the contract with Camelot. Camelot has been investigated on multiple occasions as to its activities in other, in other schools in states. I would hope that RPS would commit to figure out a way to deliver appropriate schooling to all students, and I believe they are capable of doing so without a for-profit outside contract. Timon Cosby. I go to Spartan Academy. The teachers there help to get my work done. They take time to make sure I understand. The teachers listen if I have a problem. The teachers are tough and don't let me get away with much. Even when I have a bad day, the next day, they are still nice to me. Destiny Slaton. I graduated from Spartan Academy in two thousand and eighteen. Before getting sent to Spartan Academy, I attended Armstrong High School, where I got into trouble all the time. I was fighting, skipping class, or not going to school at all. I left Spartan Academy and went back to Armstrong for two months, but then got sent back. The teachers and staff members there really motivate you and encourage you to do better. They really care about you. My behavior and attitude changed when I got sent back the second time. I was going to school, completing my work, and was on track to graduate. I am working now, excuse me, I am now working a full-time job at City Hall. I recently started a business doing nails and plan on going back to school at J. Sergeant Reynolds for my associate's degree. Without the people of Spartan Academy, I wouldn't be where I am today. Jamika Holmes. Before the school year ended, I was a proud student at Spartan Academy. I owe a lot to Spartan Academy, especially my teachers and the staff, because with them, I have improved both my attitude and my academics. Before leaving school, I was completing the final steps to become a Spartan, which is a positive leader among my peers. I like Spartan Academy the most mainly because of all of my teachers. The Spartan Academy cares so much. They care when I'm upset, when I'm happy, when I'm struggling, or when I'm the best, or when I'm at my best. They always care. Since the closing of school, many staff members have personally reached out to check on me, again, going over and beyond to show how much they really, how much I really mean to them. Camille Henderson. Spartan Academy is a great school, at least to me. I can't wait to go back, even though I feel like they're stricter, but it helps me stay on track. The teachers actually teach and have high expectations of us. Even though I'm missing my phone at school, I even feel like it helps me not be distracted in the classrooms. Once I got to, once I got used to Spartan Academy, I loved it. Joseph Hung. Or Hunt. I recently attended Spartan Academy, Richmond Alternative, before meeting the requirements and transitioning back to my home school. While I attended RAS, I maintained a passing average in all my classes, even become, even became a member of our school's student government program. I enjoyed my time at RAS for many reasons, but most importantly, I love how the teachers show love and support every day. The class assignments challenged me to work to my best potential, and the school is filled with people I can relate to. I especially loved how I can talk, love how I can talk to my teachers about personal things, and they support me one hundred percent. The person who has helped me the most is my science teacher, Ms. Powell. I appreciate all that she has done to help me be successful and remain successful. Zonkees Spencer Clark. I'm a ninth grader who previously attended Spartan Academy. I like Spartan Academy because they gave me a chance to be better. While I attended Spartan Academy, I was on top of my grades. I maintained a positive rating and then worked my way up to becoming a Spartan, which is one of the higher levels of student government. Every day at school, the teachers and staff at Spartan Academy treat us like family. In the classroom, you learn new ways to complete the work, which helps to really remember the information. Everyone in the building has always made me feel loved and important, even when I did not always deserve it, and I will always remember that. Thank you. Laron Savory. Is a middle school Spartan, a middle school Spartan and an eighth grader. Spartan Academy has changed me at home and at school. It has taught me how to be responsible, respectful, and it changed me as a person. While I was here, I got better grades at this school than any of the school, than any of the school year in my life. I made the honor roll and received leadership awards. I was able to run townhouse meetings in the morning and evening, getting everyone to do the right thing at the right time. Being a Spartan was fun because we had other opportunities the other students could have, but had to earn that privilege of being a student government member, and Spartan Academy just had a big impact on my life. Also, I would like to tell all. Shelby Evans. Axiom Educators is pleased to write a letter of support for the renewal of Spartan Academy's contract at Richmond Alternative School. Axiom has partnered with Richmond Alternative School for over ten years by providing tutoring and support at RAS Spartan Academy, the Aspire Academy, and the ISAEP program. As the VP and Director of Business Development for Axiom Educators, I have had the opportunity to work with both the administration and the students at RAS. Over the past three years, I have observed a notable shift in the climate at RAS, and I truly believe that this shift is a result of the management of Spartan Academy. It appears that the Spartan Academy has transformed the culture of RAS from an intense disciplinary atmosphere to a culture. Tyreek Bane. I am a tutor at Axiom Educators. I have had the privilege of working with many, with the students and staff at Richmond Alternative School and the Spartan Academy. I wish to recommend a renewal of the Spartan Academy contract because it is a fine program that has helped and continues to help grow, help students grow. I had the pleasure of working with the students at Spartan, at the Spartan Academy for about a month and a half. When I first got there, I have to say that I was a little nervous because I'd never worked at an alternative school before, and I wasn't sure what to expect. However, very shortly, I was put at ease due to the leadership shown at the Spartan Academy. I observed the interactions between the staff and the students and the respect they ultimately had for one another. Tyler Evans. My, I am an algebra tutor with Axiom Educators. I am happy to write a letter of support for the renewal of the Spartan Academy contract at Richmond Altern, at Richmond Alternative School. This year, I had the opportunity to tutor at both Richmond Alternative School, Spartan Academy, and Aspire Academy. I can hold heartily attest to the level of care for students, quality administration, and the overall inspiring atmosphere that both edu, that both educational facilities possess. While working at both campuses, it was easy to see that student success was the main focus. The students I had the pleasure of working with were unapologetically their true selves and made the learning experience unique and authentic. These students had a zeal for knowledge. These students had a zeal for knowledge and learning not only material reflecting coursework. Tayon Carter. I like Spartan Academy because it is quiet and staff pushed you to be good. Mr. Pep was real cool. He taught me all of the norms and stuff to help me do good. I was, I was only in school a couple of weeks then Corona came. I like townhouse, and I really wanted to be a leader in townhouse, but I was too new. Melandria Coleman. After the greetings. As a concerned high school teacher, I have talked with current and retired elementary teachers who are distressed by the nine AM to four PM schedule that is being suggested for Richmond, for RPS's pre-K through fifth grade students. I am writing to advocate for a shorter, more developmentally appropriate virtual day for our pre-K through fifth grade students. I believe that a four-hour and thirty-five-minute schedule for pre-K through second grade students and a five-hour, five-minute schedule for third through fifth grade students, that is in Raco County's sample schedule. Or the four-point-five-hour schedule for pre-K through fifth grade students, that is Chesterfield County's sample schedule, are both much, are both a much better fit for the students. I'm sorry. Kamaya Hicks. I wanted to write a letter to my school letting you guys know I miss you all a lot. And thank you all for everything y'all did for me to make me become a better person. I love all of y'all. Maysa Cooper. I'm a twenty-twenty summer graduate from Spartan Academy. This school year that just passed was my second time back to RAS. When I came back, I told Mr. Hawkins that if he would help me control my temper and get my work done and help me to graduate, that I would write an article and put it in the newspaper. He laughed and said, "All I want for you to do, all I want is for you to do good." Well, we finally made it this year, and I gave him a letter to give to the newspaper and said, "You remember my promise." And here's my letter to the newspaper. He laughed again and said, "We didn't, we didn't make it, you made it, and I'm putting this letter in a frame." Spartan Academy makes you feel supported and loved like you can run the world. And I at least plan on trying to take my piece of it. Thanks for everything and love y'all forever. Charles Washington. First of all, let me say that if it wasn't for Hawk and Strickland, my mom would have killed me. They talk so much, they talk, they talk to me so much to help me understand the things I was doing wrong and how to grow up. They talked to my mom to try to help me, help her to understand me more. For that, I have nothing but respect for them. They guided me to think about situations I had, like a job, and should I get a GED? Looking back, I'm so mad, I'm so mad that school was canceled in March. Shawanda Tucker. She had the same comment as the previous comment. Gianni Brown. I attended Spartan Academy in the two thousand nineteen school year. I really liked the structure of Spartan Academy because of the love and attention that we got there. I, Gianni Brown, won prom queen, queen, and also earned an executive position for my academics and behavior. I wish that I could go back because of the support that I have received from the staff. They have taught me skills in the adult life, discipline for the real world, and supported all of my decisions. If I could go back, I would. Anthony Allen. I attended Spartan Academy in the two thousand nineteen school year. If I could go back, I really would. Spartan Academy helped me better myself with my behavior and attitude. The staff there was amazing, and they did everything they could to support the students. Spartan Academy's structure is amazing. I love it there. The love at Spartan Academy was really there, and they cared a lot about our education. I really wish I could go back for my last year. Paulo Joseph. I am an edgenuity teacher at Spartan Academy. I have enjoyed working at Spartan Academy. The staff has been more than supportive and have continuously provided me with any resources that I may have needed to further support our students. The culture of the academy is welcoming and nurturing at all times. I feel as if I'm a part of more than just an academy, but also part of a family. Thank you. Kenneth Brown. I'm a behavior specialist at Spartan Academy. In my three years at Spartan Academy, I have built a plethora of relationships with various children. Before my employment with Spartan Academy, I was not aware of my love for educating children. Now I have found a passion for assisting with any issues possible to ensure that they are able to live their everyday lives as children. The acceptance that I received from my first day working with the children is a feeling that I'm not able to describe. Nicole Mines. I'm a behavioral specialist at Spartan Academy. I have held this position for two years and have had the opportunity to meet and work with so many amazing students that have transitioned through our hallways. I started out three years ago as an English tutor with an outside company. During this time, I was able to zero in on the academic, emotional, and behavioral support that the students needed. I learned that, I learned then that although this particular group of students were sent here due to various infractions at their home schools, they still needed and wanted to learn. However, many of our students are dealing with so many issues outside of school. They have many fears, concerns, and needs. Many just needed to feel safe enough to let their guards down to let us help them. Cynthia Sweet. I have been the high school history teacher at Spartan Academy since Camelot Education assumed responsibility of the school. I have over thirty years of teaching experience. My experiences at the Spartan Academy have been some of the most fulfilling of my life. Every day I watch miracles happen for our students. Many of the students come to us very broken. Many come to us angry. Some come to us with the basics to survive, without, excuse me, the basics to survive in life. At Spartan Academy, they receive the personal attention, caring, time, and encouragement to continue growing as a student. Importantly, as a, more importantly, as a person. With an emphasis on the needs of the individual student, I have seen miraculous changes in so many students who come through the doors. Kay Hunter. I'm, she's a former colleague of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones when she was with the Dallas Independent School District in Dallas, Texas. We have maintained communications ever since that time. It is now my understanding that she has been identified as one who is being considered for the renaming of a school. And I am so honored to write a letter of support for her in this effort. Even though I first met her when she came to Dallas, I became very much aware that she was most appreciative for the opportunities that the city of Richmond had afforded her. After having gone through the educational ranks there, she was installed as Richmond's first woman superintendent. Dr. Harrison Jones is not one to boast of her many accomplishments and national reputation as a talented, competent, compassionate, and compassionate leader. Gloria Johnson. I am seeking your support to rename a Richmond, Virginia public school in honor of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones. Dr. Lois Harrison Jones has been identified as one who has earned the right and privilege of such an honor, given her extensive and impressive service to the Richmond School District. Dr. Lois Harrison Jones began her career as a classroom teacher in the Richmond Public Schools and worked her way to the level of superintendent. Dr. Lois Harrison Jones was sworn in as Richmond, Virginia's first woman superintendent in the Richmond Public Schools, Virginia on June twenty-sixth, nineteen eighty-five, with wide community support. She has failed, she has not failed, excuse me, to appreciate, express appreciation for the opportunities afforded to her by the city of Richmond. I have worked with her as a school principal for Richmond Public Schools. Jesse McNeil Jr. It gives me great pleasure to recommend Dr. Lois Harrison Jones as a candidate for renaming a school in the Richmond Public Schools. As a fellow administrator in the Dallas Independent School District and life member of the National Alliance of Black School Educators, Dr. Lois Harrison Jones has been identified as one who has earned the rights and privilege of such an honor. Dr. Jones is worthy of this distinct honor. She has given extensive professional expertise, impressive service, and heartfelt conviction to the Richmond Public Schools, as well to the school boards, students, parents, and communities in Dallas, Texas, and Boston, Massachusetts, and in Boston, Massachusetts. Lois Harrison Jones is esteemed nationwide and internationally. Alfred Roberts Jr. I am honored to support naming of a building in the Richmond Public Schools for Dr. Lois Harrison Jones. She has a national reputation as a talented, competent, and compassionate leader. I worked with her as Assistant Superintendent for Personnel in the Dallas Independent School District, Dallas, Texas, when she served as a Deputy Superintendent under Dr. Marvin Edwards, General Superintendent. I also worked with her when I served as President of the National Alliance of Black School Educators. She later became National President of the same organization. Additionally, she was inducted to the African-American Education Hall of Fame, Dallas, Texas in two thousand seventeen. Recognized for her significant contributions in the field of education, a photographic exhibit, biographical information, and oral history were placed in the archives. Alice French. As the Director of Education for the Menoken Foundation and a former educator for Westmoreland County His, History Museum, I have had the opportunity to partner with the A.T. Johnson High School Museum and Regional Public Schools on numerous occasions over the past ten years. This relationship has also made me aware of the great accomplishments of Dr. Lois Harrison Jones. Governing bodies throughout this county are beginning to do the right thing by renew, removing the names and statutes of Robert H. Lee and other Confederates from the public, from public buildings and grounds. Richmond, Virginia is in the process of renaming all of its public schools that are named for Confederates and soliciting recommendations for their replacements. Dr. Lois Harrison Jones has earned the right and privilege of such an honor, given her extensive and impressive service to the school district, to that school district and elsewhere. Melvin Law. No one is more deserving than Dr. Lois Harrison Jones to have a school named in her honor. She has devoted most of her working life serving the children and citizens of the city of Richmond. The enclosed supporting documentation clearly reveals she is one of the finest and best-prepared educators in America. She effectively influenced countless thousands of lives in this city for decades into the future. I was a member of the Richmond School Board in nineteen eighty-five when Dr. Lois Harrison Jones was chosen as the first woman superintendent in the Richmond Public Schools. She was able to accomplish two hits, his, excuse me, she was able to accomplish two historic achievements at the same time, in that she also became the first African-American woman superintendent in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I regard serving on the board, school board, and able to be a process of these historic events as a rare privilege. Zantrel Spencer. I've always been looked at as a menace or something. The people at Spartan Academy don't look at me like that or treat me like that. Yeah, I act up sometimes because I'll be bored and I don't like school. But when I go to RAS, it doesn't feel like a boring regular school. It feels like I'm going to a cookout where I'm with cousins and uncles. I don't like what they, what they, what they're, what they be talking about all the time, but I know they know what's best. Mr. Hawkins always says, "If you know, if you knew better, then you would do better." So now I listen most of the time so I can do better. Jamar Fleming. I'm a physical education teacher at Spartan Academy, Richmond, Virginia. I love this school for being, I love this school being for the inner city of Richmond. I understand my kids and some things that they may be going through on a day-to-day basis. I love the structure and discipline that they have to go through to get back to their home school. I love my staff. They are truly dedicated to each and every kid and makes it feel good working in this type of environment. I really look forward to getting back to Spartan Academy to make a difference each and every day. Kostina Bryce. I'm an except, exceptional education teacher at Spartan Academy. Since, since working at Spartan, I have built closer relationships with the students and their families. The love that is shown on a daily basis by all staff members is infectious. I was optimistic at first about joining the team, but the culture of the school is truly unmatched. We are able to impact the lives of so many because our school is constantly changing. Our school is unique, and it truly takes compassion to work in an environment such as ours. I challenge each of you to stop and see the wonderful talents of our students and meet our wonderful staff. John David Byers. On behalf of the Virginia Commonwealth University Men's Basketball Team, we are honored to submit this letter on behalf of Mr. Raymond Strickland, Camelot Education, and Spartan Academy. I've been in Richmond, in the Richmond area for over six years now and have recruited, recruit the area for ten, recruited in the area for ten-plus years. As we know, as we all know, Richmond has its challenges as a community. Spartan Academy does an excellent job of providing students that made mistakes in the past with a second chance at becoming successful, productive citizens. In December of two thousand nineteen, we had an opportunity to host several of the students at a home basketball game. After the game, I was able to interact with the students. Every student was very respectful and represented themselves and their families in high regard. Javon Jones. My name is Javon Jones. He's currently an English teacher at Spartan Academy. I would just like to briefly share with you my experience while working at Spartan Academy. During my four years teaching and servicing students, I have had the pleasure of personally experiencing growth that this school has undergone, has undergone. From increasing rigor to cultivating a strong testing culture with our students. In September of two thousand sixteen, I entered a building full of students who wanted to learn, but who were severely distracted by various negative factors, being issues from the community. being issues from the community that poured into the school, domestic factors, and significant learning gaps. I knew it would take a special team to tackle so many odds, and that's exactly what we did. We developed a rapport with our students that I believe is truly unmatched. Demetrick Leeper. I'm a math teacher at Spartan Academy. As a native Richmonder and product of the RRHA and RPS, I feel that I have a distinct insight into the culture of our city, the needs of our citizens, especially the children, and what initiatives do and will work. I'm only entering my second year at Spartan Academy for a year, but I'm grateful for the experience. Before working there, I assumed what many people would think about an alternative school, that the school would just be out of control and difficult to work in. What I encountered was very different. The structure provided at Spartan Academy under the Camelot Education Model is an invaluable and much-needed aspect of education with our children in Richmond. In my opinion, it is probably the most important factor in our unique students' success, self-included. Kritasia Starks. I just want to say that if there is no Spartan Academy, then I wouldn't even go to school. I've always made good grades, but at Spartan Academy, they helped me control my behavior problems. When I get upset or ready, or is ready to fight, they calm me down and use a bunch of techniques and stuff to help me cope with my life when I leave school. Because at other schools, they don't care what you got going on at home. They just want to make you, they just want you to make good grades and don't care what you're going through and why you act bad sometimes. I feel like Spartan, I feel like Spartan takes the time to figure out what's wrong and they come to the students' houses to help with food and bills and all that. You tell me what other school does that, I'll wait. I love Spartan Academy. I love Charter, Martin, and all my teachers. Brandon Banks. Spartan Academy is the best school ever. Yeah, I miss things like sports and stuff like that, but the staff at Spartan makes things better. They provide structure, which I didn't like at first, but then I started understanding why. I did something and got in trouble outside of school, and I thought to myself, if I would have used some of the things they taught me, I might not have gotten in trouble. But hey, it is what it is now, but I, but I bet I'll listen more thanks to the staff at the school. I love you guys. And that appears to be all of the, the public comments for this evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lilly.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. And Ms. Wilson has been kicked out and is back again. So thank you to all of you who wrote in and shared with us your concerns and know that we have read, even if we could not read all of them out loud today. The people on the board see them and read them, and we know what you are trying to tell us, so thank you again. And now we will go on to our board action items, and the first one of those is, in fact, to receive, for action, a recommendation concerning Camelot. Mr. Camer.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. I would like to call on Mr. Hughes to present this recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Hughes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair Owen, Madam Vice Chair Burke, School Board Members, and Superintendent Cameras. I bring forth the administration's recommendation to renew the fourth and final option year of our contract with Camelot. But before I proceed any further, I want to thank all of our students and their families and staff who submitted public commentary tonight, allowing us to understand how our students and their families experience on a day-to-day basis the academic and social programming provided by the Spartan Academy staff. As you know, Camelot provides alternative education at the Spartan Academy located at the Richmond Alternative School. Spartan Academy serves students in grades six through 12th who have demonstrated significant behavioral challenges at their home school. Students are considered for transition back to their home school after a period of 90 days at RAS. And on March 13th, the last day of school before the closure, there were 140 students enrolled at the Spartan Academy. With regards to per pupil spending and average teacher salary, both costs are lower at Camelot than at RPS schools. Camelot's program is built on developing and cultivating positive relationships between Camelot staff and students. The Spartan Academy staff utilize a multi-tiered approach to build meaningful connections with all their students. Spartan Academy students participate in a daily town hall, which are designed to create a safe space where students can be their true authentic selves, to give them voice, to assist students in resolving issues, and to develop critically needed social and emotional competencies. Additionally, the Spartan Academy staff provide both targeted and intensive mental health support to students in a one-on-one setting through daily counseling sessions. The Spartan Academy also offers a number of programs, including mentorship opportunities and student governments. As you heard tonight, several of the students who submitted public comment discussed their desire to become a Spartan, the highest level of being a student leader. During the school closure, the Spartan Academy staff continued to provide instruction and social-emotional supports. Further, the staff continued to engage in home visits throughout the closure. Finally, Camelot has designed a comprehensive plan to continue their work in the fall. While we weren't able to do a comprehensive comparison of academic data, specifically comparing SOL data from year to year due to the school closure, we did see all the data associated with improved academic performance trending in the right direction, specifically a decrease in chronic absenteeism and suspension rates and an increase in average daily attendance. The 2021 school year is the last option year of our contract with Camelot. If we are being true to our word, to our goal of reopening with, with love, we know that in school, love shows up in relationships, relationships between teachers and students that are caring and supportive, schools that have intentional structures set up to develop, cultivate, and nurture these relationships. You all heard this theme of loving relationships throughout all of the public commentary that was submitted in support of Camelot. Public commentary submitted by students who although weren't successful in their comprehensive school setting, found success at RAS. Public commentary from the parents of these students that echoed the same thing, how their children benefited from these loving relationships, once built on a true belief in every student's potential regardless of circumstance. Tonight, this administration asks you to honor the voices of our students by ensuring the continuation of these deep and meaningful relationships, especially during these very challenging times. Not continuing the contract would mean the end to these critical relationships for some of our most vulnerable students, students who from their own words talked about the level of academic and behavior improvement made while in the care of the Spartan Academy staff. And the Spartan Academy staff, the members who work in RPS are part of our family as much as any RPS staff member. They have worked diligently to establish real relationships with students who arrive at RAS in need of love and connectedness. Even in a virtual setting, the Spartan Academy staff has continued to operate like normal, conducting virtual student town halls, engaging students in one-on-one counseling sessions, and conducting home visits even during the closure. The school board has extended empathy time and time again to the RPS family during this pandemic. And it is very important to the administration that we also honor the staff members that work at Camelot, honor their hard work, and allow it to continue. I will note that by not continuing this contract, this puts those staff members out of work in the middle of a pandemic. Therefore, this administration is making the recommendation to exercise the fourth year of the Camelot contract with the understanding that in the spring of 2021, we will put this contract back, back out to bid via a request or proposal or bring these services under the RPS umbrella. I want to thank you all for your time and consideration this evening, and I'll pause here for questions.
Well, before we have the discussion, let's see if we have a motion. Do I have a motion? Oh, and Ms. Cosby has joined us, Ms. Wilson. Did you see that?
No, I didn't. Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Madam Chair. I move that we continue this partnership with Camelot in 2021. It's listed.
Thank you. And Ms., all right, so Ms. Burke has made the motion and Ms. Page has seconded. So now I will look at the chat to see if we have any questions or discussion about this matter. I do not see any. Ah, here we go. Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also very thankful for all the members of the public who have weighed in on this, as well as the administration's feedback on the matter. I am curious to know why in particular teacher pay is so much lower for the staff at Spartan Academy versus our standard RPS teachers and to what we attribute the lower cost per pupil. Is that pretty closely aligned with the the matter of teacher pay, or is it the lack of other programmatic expenditures like sports and things of that nature? Or some comments in there?
Thank you for the questions, Mr. Barlow. First, I would say teacher pay is dependent upon teacher experience. So we can assume that in some ways that the average experience of the Spartan Academy teachers is less than of the average RPS teacher. Again, clearly that does not negate their effectiveness. And with regards to your second question, yes, you are correct. The lower per pupil spending is based on the fact that the Spartan Academy doesn't have such programs, such as sports and other things that would raise the per pupil spending.
Okay. Now, Ms. Cosby, and then Ms. Page.
Thank you. So I know that it was mentioned, Mr. Hughes, that there was a plan for the fall. So how does, I know there were home visits, you mentioned home visits, when we closed for COVID. So part of the effectiveness of Camelot has been the ability to develop these relationships and work very closely with individual students and one-on-one. So what is the plan as we move forward for September?
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. I mean, it's, in my opinion, it's, it's pretty simple. It's to follow the game plan that the Spartan Academy has put in place from the fall of last year, from this last school year. It is to ensure that they continue to emphasize these very nurturing relationships. I have spoken with the, the folks who run Camelot, and they have assured me that still conducting home visits regardless of our COVID situation will occur. And I think these home visits have been game changers in many ways for our students and their families, and they will just continue the practices that they have started in previous years. Additionally, they'd also have created a virtual learning manual that lays out all of the academic and social-emotional programming for next school year.
Okay, Ms. Cosby, you okay? All right.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Page, and then Ms. Gibson. And then Mr. Barlow and Mr. Young.
Thank you. I just want to give a historical perspective about alternative education. I have been a part of the board, witnessed when the board has had an effective alternative education program and been a part of the board with an effective alternative education program such as RAS. I have served on many, many disciplinary committees, and I have heard from the students. I've heard from the parents to make a recommendation for their child to return to RAS because of the small setting, intimate setting for our students. Because we just, some students may need to learn in a smaller, intimate environment, a more, you know, non-traditional setting. And I think it would be a detriment to our students and our families if we don't have this option for our students to be able to learn in a non-traditional setting so that they can be successful and move on and become productive citizens. So again, I, I support RAS and I'm looking forward to their program that's going to be in place starting this September to address the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Ms. Page, I want to thank you for those comments. And as you heard from our students, and you stated, a number of them will continue at RAS next year, where we will continue to be able to maximize on the existing relationships that are in place as all of the Camelot staff is currently scheduled to report back to the Spartan Academy in the fall.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, and now Ms. Gibson.
Madam Chair, can I add one more comment real quick? Something Mr. Hughes stated, relationships. That, that is, that means a lot to our students. Dealing relationships and knowing that we have adults in place, they care. They care about our students. And, and again, like I said, it's a non-traditional setting. And if this is the best setting for our students, I completely support it because those relationships mean a lot.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Page, Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Barlow, Mr. Young, Ms. Dorr, Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the, the third year that I've been on the board and that being asked to vote on this program. And it will be the third time that I vote against the renewal of the Camelot program. This is, however, the first year that I will be voting against the renewal of the Camelot program after the contract is already ended. You know, I think as a city, as a country, we've been talking a lot about Black Lives Matter and, and this alternative program is really at the heart of that discussion. And, and I think it's unfortunate that this was taken off of the agenda at a time when we really could have had a true discussion about the program and its merits. I have requested year after year, you know, more, more insight, more data. And, and every year, there's been a reason why, you know, more information should not be shared. I, I also want to note that, you know, I remind everyone that this is a for-profit company. And for-profit companies are not driven by relationships. They're driven by the bottom line. And so I think when we see, you know, calling out that the teacher salaries are less, we should, we should question that. And I also want to remind us that we should never be having a conversation about average teacher salary without also having a conversation about average teacher tenure and the amount of experience that those teachers have. without also having a conversation about average teacher tenure and the amount of experience that those teachers have. Because that, that certainly does matter. And I, I do feel uneasy that many, many students of the program, and I certainly hope that, you know, they've, they've had those experiences, but when a for-profit company is being advocated by students, something about that just doesn't feel right to me. And so I, I hope again that next year, this body, whomever is seated on it, is able to have a true discussion about this program with enough time to actually do something about it. Because at this point, this vote is truly a formality, which is unfortunate because, because this is an incredibly important conversation to be having. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. Barlow, then Mr. Young, Ms. Dorr, Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, I also share some of the concerns related to the fact that we have contracted out to a for-profit company to, to run our alternative program. I was at the school board meeting, I believe it was, yeah, 2016, when, when that board voted to initially implement this contract. And it was a little uneasy, generally speaking, about, about us sort of as a district throwing our hands up in the air and saying, this isn't something that we feel we can take on, at least with respect to putting in place compassionate programming and developing those relationships in-house. And I'd still like for us to work towards doing that. When we first voted on the renewals aboard, I expressed hesitation when I voted to to approve this contract. And, you know, at the time, the, the hope was that we would take that next year to reevaluate and determine how we may, may be able to go about providing these services in-house. Last year, I voted against it due to the, these, these same concerns. And I'll be doing the same this evening. I will say I I am really glad to hear that, that many of our students feel like they're getting, they're, they're developing positive relationships and have a positive learning environment. I do think that that is something that we should be able to accomplish as a school district. I, I do have, I do share some concerns related to to the fact that it is a for-profit entity. And my hope is that no matter how this vote turns out tonight, that we will be working towards figuring out how to provide the supports that our students need and deserve in an alternative setting using in-house resources. Because I'm sure that there are lessons that we have picked up from the Camelot experience, but I'm sure that there are also other models and other approaches that we can learn from to ensure that we are able to provide these services as a school district.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. So Mr. Young, then Ms. Dorr, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my question for Harry pertains to last year and specifically when we, when we convened the new school year. If we know what the, for lack of better description, attrition rate was, or what percentage of students who started the year by the end of the, the first semester returned to their, to their zone school or to their comprehensive school? And and my purpose inquiring relates to trying to extrapolate some kind of apples to, to apples for this year. In other words, what, what we can anticipate, the, the weekly census or, or number of students will be in, in Camelot should the contract be renewed by the end of the semester. So I hope that made sense. Just trying to, because we're in a very different universe right now. What we appreciate the conversation earlier about some students wanting to stay at Spartan Academy. But if we have some kind, the, some kind of idea that may be imperfect of what, what our census or how many students we would have by the end of the semester at Camelot, given the circumstances we're in, and I, we're virtual this semester.
Mr. Young, thank you for the question. Given that we are going to be virtual for the first semester next year at minimum, I anticipate that almost all of our students who are currently at the Spartan Academy will return to the Spartan Academy again, based on those nurturing relationships that they have developed with the Spartan Academy staff members, especially given all this uncertainty with COVID and daily stress, toxic stress that students are facing. Again, best evidence I can provide is the anecdotal evidence of so many students and parents providing public commentary tonight suggesting that they will continue and want to stay at RAS. And frankly, they do better with the Spartan Academy staff.
Okay. Ms. Dorr. I'm sorry. Ms. Dorr and then Ms. Cosby.
Thanks. You know, the, this conversation always does occur, I think, because our contract is up for renewal at this time in the summer. And so it always feels rushed to assess what's, what's, you know, what our plan is for alternative education. So my request would be that next year, well in advance of the, and I think this will be triggered by the, the necessitated by the fact that we have to go out for bid and/or explore in-sourcing it. And I know this has also been a item on our strategic plan so that, you know, that we have the, this conversation, you know, earlier than now. And my question relates to kind of timing. So I was just curious if you could speak to the, you know, what would happen to the staff at Spartan should this body decide not to vote to renew the contract?
Thank you, Ms. Dorr, for the question. The, unfortunately, the staff at Spartan would, they would lose employment. And we, as a school division, would lose 22 staff members who are dedicated to our students. So it would be a loss both from a humanistic standpoint around folks who work so hard losing their jobs. But it'll be an even bigger loss for our students and our families.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just, I'm going to piggyback off of my earlier question about the plan for September. And just as you all are presenting us with a virtual plan, I would like to see that from Camelot. Because yes, I, as I, you know, we've mentioned before, the at-home visits, but those aren't the only ways that that I'm sure staff reach out to or have reached out to students or are thinking of continuing to reach out. But anyway, would just like to see a, a plan for the fall.
Absolutely, Ms. Cosby. I'll be more than delighted to provide you a copy of the plan very soon.
And also to my colleagues, and I'm just going to reiterate what Ms. Dorr said in terms of, this does come up during the summer, yes. And we never seem to have enough information, but I just want to say, you know, we know alternative education is a priority. At one point, we even had a committee regarding alternative education. We decided to discontinue that committee because we had a new administration that said, okay, we, you know, this is a priority for you, this is a priority for us. And to give them time to develop a, a, a plan. And so I know that with this budget cycle, we have put in for additional personnel to work on alternative education and would like to see an alternative education plan. Hopefully by the end of this year, calendar year. I think that would help. And I'm saying by the end of the calendar year because of course, come January, there are discussions for the new fiscal year. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to Camelot or anything like that. As a matter of fact, I, I don't think that we should, you know, I think we have to keep in mind that right now, we don't have enough options when it comes to alternative ed. That would be a separate conversation. However, please do keep that in mind that we do need additional plans for, for alternative education. But first, would definitely like to see whatever plan Camelot has for the fall.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. Mr. Young has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is not terribly unlike Felicia's. And specifically, we did hear some, we heard some testimony, some persons weighing in relevant to last semester. And Mr. Hughes also addressed it. Do we have, this is a question, Harry, do we, do we have data relevant to the preceding semester? And specifically, when we all, when everyone went virtual, how many students at, at RAS were logged, logged in? Do we have any numbers so we can compare and contrast with, with our own RPS numbers for, for the last semester? I think that, again, it's kind of, well, I don't want to put words in Ms. Cosby's mouth, but kind of where she's approaching it from too.
Yes, Mr. Young, we can make that a part of our data pool when we look at the edgenuity module log-ons and completion rates for the entire RPS division. So it is not something we've compiled yet, but we haven't compiled that for our schools, any of our schools just yet.
All right, I don't see any others. I will say to all those people who wrote in and some of you said, visit, I have visited. I have visited and I've been very impressed. And I know that the staff really does work hard. And I have heard from some of the students even before tonight. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank them for the work that they've been doing with their students. And really what they've been doing is kind of what we want to be doing in every school. So let's have our vote. Ms. Wilson?
Okay, the motion was made by Mrs. Burke, seconded by Ms. Page to continue the, continue with the partnership with Camelot for the 2020-2021 school year. Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby? Yes. Mr. Young? Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Still deliberating here at the 11th hour. Yes.
Dr. Sapieni?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
No.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Motion passes 7-2.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we go to Board Action Item 3.02. Receive for action, the Personnel Actions. Of course, they were posted to Board Docs. Ms. Lee, did you want to say something about them?
Good evening. I'm happy to read the summary or address any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't see any. Can I have a motion then to approve the Personnel Actions?
So moved.
All right, that was Mr. Barlow. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Ms. Dorr. All right. Still not seeing anyone with a question or comment. So we will move to the vote. Ms. Wilson?
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby? Yes. Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Dr. Sapieni?
No.
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yeah.
Motion passes 6-1.
All right. So 3.03, Receive for Action Board Travel and District Activity Requests. Ms. Wilson, do we have some of those?
No, I did not receive any.
All right, then we will move on to 3.04, Receive for Action Budget Transfers.
Good evening. I'll just briefly outline the intent of each of the transfers. There were two documents uploaded this evening. The first one is related to exceptional education. And it's simply a change in the location of the same amount of money from a full-time position for an instructional assistant to support students at Amelia Street and 13 Acres to being able to work with one of our exceptional education contractors to provide that service. This is an instructional assistant who has worked with these students last year. And we want to continue that service. It's just putting those dollars in a contracted line versus internal line. The second budget request form is, I'm sure you all have seen, the supplies that we're excited to provide, both our teachers and students come with cost. And so we've identified three items in our current budget for which need now is different, given our virtual opening. The first and the most notable is a transfer of $500,000 out of our contracted transportation line for VPI. Much like the board approved the transfer out of contracted transportation at the last meeting. This is half of that budget line item so that we would be prepared for transportation of preschool students on February 8th, but wouldn't need these contracted services up to that point. The second piece is related to one-to-one nursing costs. We have about 10 or so students in RPS who are medically fragile with significant medical needs. And during the school year at the building, some services are provided, for example, cleaning a trach, sucking a trach, or perhaps caring for student with diabetes that's so severe that their blood sugar is, is spiking frequently. Given we're not providing those services in the school, we're able to transfer some of those monies out of the contracted service. The amount that's left in this line is still more than half so that we would be available to provide any services needed for instructional needs in the, in, in the possibility we come back to school in February 8th. And then the third transfer you'll see here, as you know, through our new strategy, Connect RPS, we're focused on building relationships and connections. And with our CARES money, we allocated $2.5 million for increased supports around mental health and behaviors. And so since we're not in person, some of the monies that the board had initially allocated for our elementary behavior pilot, that was a $500,000 line item, we're asking to transfer out about $370,000 of that, given much of that work is covered in the CARES money. We are still maintaining monies in that line item to hire staff as well as continue the design work. as well as continue the design work uh so that we'll be prepared uh for that pilot uh when, uh when needed. And I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, before we do the questions, um is there a motion to approve this budget transfer request?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Ms. Burke has moved it. Is there a second? Well, I'll second it.
Second.
So Ms. Burke moved it, Ms. Owen seconded. And now is there any discussion? I do have one question. But nobody else does. Oh, Ms. Gibson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um so my request to the administration is to provide the board with a comprehensive budget for the 2020, 2021 school year, um including all of the changes, both um additional budget needs and um and budget savings. Now that we've made the decision to go virtual, um you know, I, I believe that the uh boards in, in our neighboring districts have received this. You know, I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not making these decisions kind of dripping in and, and because I, I want to make sure we're looking at everything together. Um and you know, this kind of merges into the, the discussion on reopening. And I know there are some budget numbers there, but um I, I just think it's important to, to get more detail altogether so that we can look at the additional million dollars for these instructional kits in the context of, of all of the other needs that we are considering um with the, with the uh unconventional reopening this year. Another question um that I brought up when this item uh was first discussed was just to get a bit more detail in terms of what's inside these instructional kits. And um and then also uh, you know, any other, any other budget items that um that we expect that there'll be you know, money remaining so that we can, we can decide all these things, you know, kind of at the onset. This was something too, you know, that had been requested um at the end of last year as we were looking at um the uh budget implications as the schools were closed. Thank you.
And Ms. Gibson, I've placed the um link on our website, um which has the reopening kit contents for your review.
And she put that in the chat?
Yes.
And my question, real quickly, Ms. Udesko, was about the money for the pilot for the elementary. You said it was, the budgeted amount was 500,000, but you're transferring 500,000? Or did I not read that correctly?
I'm sorry for that confusion. The 500,000 was related to VPI transportation for the elementary behavior pilot. It's around 370. So there's uh remaining dollars for staff and design work.
Okay, thank you, because as you know, that pilot is dear to my heart.
Yes.
Okay, then in that case, I do not see any other questions or comments. So Ms. Wilson, let's have our vote.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow? Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yeah.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to Board Business. Our first item is to receive an update on our
Ms. Owen? Ms. Owen, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. We added the, we added the one about the conversation about moving the, the date for our next meeting. And I will say that our next meeting date is on September 8th and it usually is the opening day of school. And given that this is a very unusual first day of school, I um asked our superintendent to check with the team and see how they would feel about possibly not having a meeting the night of our opening day. And they felt that that would be good if we changed it. And they pointed out that two weeks from tonight is August 31st, and that would be, you know, just the week before, which seems like a, a good time, a good possibility, especially since the compact team meeting that we had scheduled for that day was now held earlier. And the other possibility that they suggested, and I'm looking at the calendar, was September the 14th? If I got that right, Mr. Cameras? Yes. So um we haven't, the, the mo, the agenda change did not suggest one of those two. So I don't know if somebody at this point has a preference and would like to make a motion for a particular day. I would entertain that motion at this time. I'm moved. Ms. Gibson has put in that she would like to make the motion. Ms. Gibson?
So I'll motion that uh we, we scheduled the meeting uh that was scheduled for September 8th to September 14th.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini has seconded that motion. All right, so is there any discussion about moving to September 14th from the 8th? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My dog feels very strongly about this too. Um so I just wanted to say that um I, I actually typically like having a, a meeting on the first day of school. But I think in this case, I, my preference would be to have the meeting on the 14th, uh so it's shortly after the start of school so that we are able to hear from parents, um family and staff members after, shortly after the start of the school year to get their input on how things are going.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, then Ms. Wilson, let's have our, this, our vote.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini? Dr. Sapini? Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so we will have our back-to-back meetings in September on the 14th and the 21st. All righty, then thank you for reminding me, Ms. Wilson, because I did not write it down on my agenda. So now we've moved to Board Business and receive an update on the um memorandum of understanding with the Virginia Department of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Um we continue to have our um quarterly meetings and I continue to have my weekly meetings with the Office of School Quality. I did want to note that there is a new head of OSQ, Dr. Aurelia Ortiz. And so she's been on board for about two weeks and we have really enjoyed working with her. She uh is now my primary point of contact for my weekly call with the VDOE. And I'm thrilled to share, as I uh shared with the board earlier today and then via RPS Direct, that Dr. Ortiz and the Office of School Quality have approved our reopening plan. So we are, of course, thrilled by that um after they gave it a thorough review.
Very good. Is there anything else that we need to know about this ongoing memorandum of understanding?
It is, it is ongoing.
It is ongoing.
Yes.
Forever. Well, no, not forever, just until we're all accredited. All right, then moving on to, unless anybody else has a question or comment, I don't see any. Oh, Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm uh, and thank you, Mr. Cameras, for the update. I'm glad to hear that the VDOE has approved our reopening approach. And I know that there may be opportunity for some additional discussion about this uh later, but I am curious to know what type of feedback or guidance we've received from the state on um attendance issues. And um I'm also curious to hear a little bit more about um some, an issue that you and I had discussed relatively recently related to um the impact of funding on ADM and advocacy surrounding that issue.
I can say on, on that second issue you raised that every single superintendent I have spoken to in the Commonwealth has shared a concern about their ADM. And that's true of uh us and Reiko, Chesterfield, Petersburg, everybody I've spoken to. Um and there are a couple of factors at play. One is some families choosing to homeschool their students. And the other is lower rates of enrollment in pre-K and K as families are choosing to wait it out a year. Uh and so there is a shared concern across the Commonwealth about the impact that lower ADM will have. I know that Dr. Lane is aware of this and is uh advocating to hold districts harmless. I think we'll learn more specifically coming out of the special session, which starts tomorrow. But this is something that, that I personally am advocating for um with the state, but I know my colleagues rural, urban, suburban, and everything in between are all experiencing. And I apologize, your first question, Mr. Barlow?
About attendance.
Yeah, so attendance and I guess more broadly, uh you know, it appeared earlier this summer that the VDOE seemed um primarily focused on guidance for uh for how to uh open um with an in-person approach. So I'm curious to know now that RPS and a number of other school divisions have opted for a virtual start of the school year, what type of additional support or guidance you've received, either outside of the MOU relationship or in those discussions, uh that, that may be beneficial for us to know as a board, for the public to know?
Yes, on attendance, uh the initial guidance has actually provided us with a lot of flexibility, understanding that there are all kinds of unforeseen circumstances that might prevent a child from logging on at the assigned time. And so the state has outlined a number of other ways that students can uh demonstrate sort of attendance by virtue of completion of work and things of that nature. Uh those aren't um prescriptions in terms of how to track attendance, they're just flexibilities. And so the approach we've generally taken is to set the expectation that attendance is required. We do want to do everything we can to have uh kids show up at, at 9:15 AM when our instructional day will start. That being said, uh we will have flexibilities in place for kids for whom uh the internet goes out or the computer is not working or the whole myriad of other reasons why they may not be able to be there at the assigned time. So we're working through the specifics of that as we speak.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Page has question?
Yes, Madam Chair, my question is, when is the next scheduled meeting that we will have with um DOE? In um within the guidelines of our MOU? Do we have a date scheduled yet, fall?
Ms. Page, are you speaking of the meeting we have with uh Dr. Lane and President Geller? Or are you talking?
Yes, and, and also that include all board members that would like to attend?
Yes. I don't believe that has been scheduled yet for the upcoming um fall/winter. Uh Michelle, do you have any additional information on that? That is the uh formal meeting between the board?
Um, I don't have information, but I'll email um Dr., I'll email Dr. Lane. I have a call tomorrow morning with them and I'll find out when they'd like to schedule that. Thanks for flagging.
We want to make sure that we are meeting all of our requirements of the MOU.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Young has a question?
Madam Chair, my question wasn't unlike Scott's. Um and I, and I am very curious to, and very eager to have that discussion about attendance, but I also know that we're going to later in this agenda uh have another bite at the apple relevant to reopening. So if it's
Okay.
if it's better to wait till then, um that's fine on my end.
Okay. All right, we'll wait. Okay, then Receive for First Read Policy Revision. Ms. Lilly, there are a lot of them.
Yes, there are. Um but um as we cycle through and um capture the changes that were required by the General Assembly, it's not necessarily out of the ordinary that we have this volume, but um some of the changes range from um, you know, a phrase or two that are now required to some um significant departures from um business as usual, so to speak. So what you have um on Board Docs, which was posted, is a summary um first of the changes, which hopefully is an easy guide through the 124 pages of changes um that um are also attached in, in red line or in tracked change version. Um so I don't know, I will not go through each and every one of them tonight, but I would like to highlight a few of them and then let you know upfront, since we've added, since we've changed the meeting date for our next meeting, um I've given you a, an extra week um for comments. So I would like to get any comments or questions from, from you on the changes um by September the 4th, if you can. And understand that some of the, most of these uh reflect changes that are required by the General Assembly. There are several policies here that are, are noted as um policy updated at the request of the administration. But for those changes that are noted um for, from the General Assembly, there's little to no flexibility in changing them. But if you have questions about the implications, I certainly will be able to answer those for you. Would like to highlight a few, if, if I may, just big-ticket items as far as headlines. There are several policies that um you will see mirror the same language. And a lot of the language, for example, in purchasing in commercial, promotional, and corporate sponsorships and partnerships, you'll see that um the General Assembly at this, at the, in the previous session, 2020 session, added some flexibility uh in the law regarding the implications of um a person's criminal history on their ability to, number one, be hired, and that's a, a later uh policy that um I'll note. But also the ability of a contractor to engage the services of someone who had been previously convicted of a felony. And um you would have to note, there used to be a bar against um the receiving the services of, of those who had been convicted of felonies who had direct contact or who would it be anticipated to have direct contact with students. And so there is some flexibility now in the law that um would allow for, in hiring, and that's first and foremost for RPS, in hiring now, um it, it, um the tag is violent felonies and, and there, you know, barrier crimes that you can now um be certified to be hired by the division, where at first there was a prohibition across the board of the hiring of anyone who had, had, who had been convicted of a felony. So there is some flexibility now, and I think that's in line with um some of the conversations that's, that you've been, that's been, that have been in the community for some time about um just banning, checking the box, and all of those types of things. So that would be helpful, I'm sure, in the hiring process. So that would be helpful, I'm sure, in the hiring process. And that language, as I said, you'll see in several other policies because it had other implications with respect to contractors and for those who the school division would have partnerships with that would have direct contact with students. The other big-ticket bucket, if you will, you'll see several policies, the equal opportunity policies, the harassment policies in both the personnel and the student sections, as well as the public charter school policies that have changed, that just simply expand the list of characteristics that are now included as protected classes within the prohibition against discrimination. And so you'll see in the changes now that gender identity, marital status, pregnancy, childbirth, status of, as a veteran, and genetic information as some of the expanded classifications that are now included in the policy with respect to equal opportunity employment harassment. Again, you'll see those sections in both the personnel and the students section, as well as the public charter school section. The other item that I want to bring to your attention would be that as of July one, school boards no longer have the option of extending the probationary term of a teacher beyond three years. And so you might recall that, that Richmond had elected several years ago to take advantage of that ability to, and, and had a five-year probationary term for teachers, but that is no longer, no longer the standard. So it is a three-year probationary term for teachers, and that's reflected in the, in the modification there. Want to bring to note, I know that there had been a question specifically asked about this, that one of the policies that, that's included as an administrative request is a policy for parental leave, and that's noted in the absences, employee absences and leave policy. So that did come forward, I recall that that had been a specific question before. Also, a new policy that I would like to highlight, or bring to your attention as new, is the restraint and seclusion of students. And certainly by law, and we're a little bit ahead of time for this one, by January, this needs to be on the, needs to be on the books. And, and the restraint and seclusion of students policy follows the Virginia Board of Education regulations that outline the protocols and for restraint and seclusion of students in school. And so the policy has been reviewed among the administration, has been reviewed against the regulations, as well as against the Virginia School Boards Association model policy. And so that is there listed as a new policy. As I said, you know, me highlighting those policies doesn't diminish the effect of the changes of the others. But again, for the sake of time tonight, I did not go down each one unless you really want me to do that. I can, but if there are specific questions that I can answer tonight, I'd be happy to do that. But if not, I believe that the summary is self-explanatory. And again, if you have questions and concerns, please give those to me by September the fourth, or send those to me by September the fourth, and I'll be able to address them accordingly. And I can entertain any questions now.
Mr. Barlow has a question.
Please excuse me, I snuck a bite to eat. So I've got a question, so both with respect to the expansion of the definitions of protected class, the restraint policies, things of that nature, can you give us some insight into what the training looks like for our impacted staff when we implement these policies? So how do we ensure that all these practices are being put into place shortly after these, or whenever these policies go into effect following our passage?
I will attempt to answer that, and I, anyone from the administration can jump in. I know that the, on the restraint and seclusion policy, there is concerted effort to make certain that a schedule has been, been put in place to make certain that folks are trained in, in those techniques. And so I am certainly aware of, of the training aspects of that as, as the policy includes specific prohibitions. It includes details on where you can do it, when you can do it. But it also requires training, and I know that that has, that's in the works. As far as the harassment policies, in the policies themselves, there are annual training requirements that are required. And I, I know that we work with the administration to make certain that the, those policies are, are implemented as well, and trainings are implemented as well. As far as a schedule for those, at this point, I do not have. And that's something that, you know, we can, we certainly will work on.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I see no other questions or comments at this time. Just all get our deadline, September fourth, gosh, which is coming quickly. Thank you very much, Ms. Lilly, this was a lot of work. I appreciate very much all that you have done to help us with this.
Thank you.
Okay, and so now, discuss proposals from the city for supportive virtual learning.
Ms. Owen, would you like me to frame this, or would you like to?
Well, I think I'll let you do it, and you can talk about the letter, which everybody got today, but I don't know that everybody has seen.
Sure, so earlier today, the board and myself received a letter from Mayor Stoney requesting the use of some of our facilities to support their efforts citywide to provide some sort of childcare for working families, children of essential workers who will find it very difficult to work and oversee their students' learning day. I know this is something that the board has discussed at a high level, but given the approaching school year, we thought it would be useful to have a discussion this evening and to see if there was a consensus, one way or the other, so that we could be responsive to the city and, and if we were going to move forward with utilizing a handful of our facilities that we could begin to articulate what that partnership might look like. I do want to note that in any of the discussions that we have had with the city, we have clarified that if RPS were to use some of its facilities for childcare, RPS staff would not be the ones running it, and there would need to be other outside resources, agencies and such who would oversee those programs. And towards that, and I do want to note that the mayor indicated in his letter that he would make available $3 million of the city's allocation of care funds towards this effort. That would be for childcare provided broadly in the city, whether it was in our facilities or in other neighborhood-based or faith-based organizations, which I believe would also be a part of the city's strategy on this front. Anything else, Ms. Owen?
Well, I, in his letter, he referenced that we had allowed the use of a building this spring. And I would appreciate it if you would explain to us which that was and what was the result.
Yes, we partnered with the city on a childcare center for essential, children of essential workers. It was at Carver Elementary School. Ms. Udasco was point on that, so she can speak a little bit more to the details about the number of individuals who expressed interest, and then ultimately the number of young people that utilized it, and for how long.
Or initially, the city had sent out, this is my understanding, the city had sent out a survey to their staff about childcare needs and received about 400 responses that there was a need for childcare. However, none of those families ended up using the childcare center. We did end up with one or two children who were GRTC employee students, children who did end up utilizing the center. So I, I think despite there being notable need for the childcare at that time, when there was a full city closure, it was not utilized.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, now I see Ms. Cosby, Mr. Young, and Ms. Page. Ms. Cosby?
I'm sorry, actually, I had, I had responded to the presentation from Ms. Lilly, and I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh huh, no problem. But I'll go ahead and, and just give my two cents with this. I'm, you know, I know we're going to have a, the time for the discussion, and I just want to say very broadly, you know, I, I, I am in favor of supporting efforts. I do know that a lot of our families that are most impacted and will need are coming from communities that are most vulnerable and that have already been disproportionately impacted by COVID. And so I'm in favor of, of providing some type of support via facilities. And we just have to talk about what that'll look like.
Okay. Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am, I, I do support, I do support partnering, continuing to partner with our nonprofit partners, among others, and to include use of our facilities. We have all had so many conversations with, with folks who are terribly concerned about what, what the next week or the next month will, will mean for, for them and for their family. And, and for that reason, I think it's, it's so imperative that, that we, that we do provide access to our facilities, and we continue to, to partner with, with all nonprofits in town, many of whom have agreed to step up to the plate in big way and assist in this, this moment of crisis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Young, Ms. Page, then Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Dorr.
Thank you. And this may be a little early to get this information, but, um, yes, our most vulnerable families will be impacted, or has been impacted by COVID. So the childcare, do we have idea who the partners may be utilizing our school buildings? And also, because we are talking about, a lot about frontline workers trying to, you know, work also that in need of childcare. So is the childcare, you may not know this right now, Superintendent, but is it going to be on a sliding scale fee, or how, how will all of that look?
My understanding is the city would like to use some of that CARES funding to subsidize the cost of some, or most of those seats so that it could be on a sliding scale, so that families who could not afford to pay for it, or could only afford to pay a portion, would still be able to participate. In terms of the partners, I know the YMCA has been at the table as one of the key partners, though I know the city is committed to also supporting a host of neighborhood-based organizations as well. I just don't know the specifics of that.
So do you know when the information will be readily available for the, the board to have, you know, provide their input?
I, I, I don't know specifically, I think. And also, I think to a certain extent, that will depend on whether the board is comfortable offering some of the facilities to be used, because that will then affect how many spaces the city is able to put forward. I think the, the allure of using schools is that they have classrooms and are set up for young people, obviously, which is a little bit different from, you know, another nonprofit, or, or even a church, which may run a Sunday school, but it's not quite as extensive as, as what would occur in a school.
I mean, and I think it would be helpful, as you've heard from other colleagues, we really want to, want to see how would this look? How would this partnership look in assisting our families? That's, that is really key.
If I may, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
I guess what I would pose to the board is the following. What would need to be true from the board's perspective in terms of how this would work for the board to be comfortable utilizing a handful of our facilities? And I want to be clear, we're not talking about forty-four. We're probably talking about four to five. And so is there anything that would make the board comfortable with doing that? And by anything, I mean stipulations about the funding, stipulations about who staffs it, stipulations about anything, stipulations about which schools are inbounds and which aren't? That would help me carry this forward.
I would say all of that above, but also what will it, you know, what will be the fees, or what will be, what will be the costs to families? That's really important, because if we are really, truly assisting our families that are in need, the cost definitely plays a big part in this.
So a free or highly subsidized program would be one of the requirements. That makes complete sense to me. I think one of the requirements would be that there would be no additional costs to RPS. I think one of the requirements, I see thumbs up, would be that our custodians and nurses would not be required to staff these centers. I see thumbs up. I think we could put some stipulations around maximum number of students per class and per school. Anything else on the list? Those are the ones that I've been thinking of, but if...
Well, we have several people
I'm sorry.
who asked to comment, so let's go to them first. Okay, I'm just trying to figure it out. I think Ms. Page is done, so now Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, and I'm...
And then Ms. Dorr and Ms. Burr.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate, Mr. Cameras, I appreciate you framing it in this way, because this is largely similar to how I've been thinking about the issue. Is, I'm sure I may be open to it on some level, but there are some stipulations that I would want to see and some considerations that I think need to be taken into account before we, before we allow for it. And I think the, the chief among them, to me, is the scope. So the number of students, and whether that be on a facility basis. I mean, you mentioned limiting it to four or five schools. You know, if, if we, you know, in an ideal world, we could have one adult with one student, and only take care of forty-four kids, and have one in each building. And I think that would be the most effective. and only take care of 44 kids and have one in each building. And I think that would be the most effective way to minimize our risk if we were opening up childcare facilities. So I'm not necessarily so concerned about limiting the number of facilities as I am the concentration of individuals in these circumstances. The next thing I think that we have to be very serious about is the types of precautions that we're putting into place, right? So we spent a lot of time talking about what a hybrid model would look like, what in-person model would look like. And I don't want our facilities to be open for the use if if there's any standard of care less than what we had discussed earlier. And that's all couched within the fact that I would expect there to be many fewer students than you would see in a typical school day and many fewer adults. So to really, I think, feel comfortable with endorsing this kind of partnership, I would need to have a better idea of the scope that we're dealing with. So the number of students, the number of potential facilities. The other thing that I think I keep in mind is childcare is needed. It sounds like the city wants to move forward with helping to provide childcare. There are likely, if it's going to happen anyway, and we have some ability to pitch in by lending the use of our facilities in a safe manner, then I may be comfortable with it if I see what COVID precautions are being taken, what approach we're taking in the event of an infection at one of these facilities, how transportation is handled. I assume families would be responsible for their own transportation. I can't imagine that we would be involved in that process. And yeah, it would be helpful to know more about which facilities we would be using, but I don't think that's really as critical to me as the density of students in a facility and what precautions are being taken. And then just, I guess, more broadly, what what, yeah, I mean, really the precautions. And so the last thing I think that is worth mentioning is, of course, you know, as a school system, we have to be very conscious of the costs of these types of efforts, but we are also, we also owe it to to our families on some level to be, you know, watching out for their safety. So I would prefer that we'd not really take on any additional cost burden associated with this, but I certainly want to know what types of expectations there are and whether the organizations who may be utilizing these facilities have the capacity to help clean and things of that nature. But so I'd say my support is largely couched in what precautions we're taking. So it'd be helpful to see more details about a plan, but I'm not necessarily ruling it out. But really, we did, we did open virtually for a reason, and that's to protect adults and families in our schools. So if we have plans that can still largely account for that or that will account for that, then, you know, then that may be acceptable. But if, I also don't want to see a Paulding County, Georgia situation on our hands where we see a bunch of kids in a school without masks on. And I understand that there are differences nearly person to person in our city and elsewhere about what reasonable precautions are and what precautions should be taken. So if our facilities are being used, I want to be very clear about mask requirements. I want to be very clear about hand sanitizing hand sanitizing requirements. I want to be very clear about cleanliness requirements and the number of number of kids and adults in these spaces.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow, Ms. Dorr, and then Ms. Burke?
Yeah, I largely agree with a lot of what my other colleagues have said, so I'll try and only say new things. I will make the point, as I think we all have made, is that we, it would be, I think, a real mistake if we opened up our schools for virtual learning centers. That would just completely negate the action that we took to go virtual. And so I think that, but we have to remain pragmatic. The economy is open and schools are closed. And so how do we how do we create space for essential workers that is truly different from a situation in which we would be opening our schools? So I agree with a lot of what Mr. Barlow said. And the the, so I, but I would say that, you know, really limiting the scope of children and families that have, you know, that really need childcare as opposed to, and really limiting the number of kids. And then I would say, two other thoughts are, in terms of buildings, I do think that there's some research around health of HVAC and air circulation. So I would say newer buildings is probably better. And then second, related to that, I suspect that, and I hope that as we think about reopening our reopening plan, there's going to need to be some facility improvement, maintenance improvements that we make on our own buildings. And so I would just want to make sure that whatever that maintenance schedule is, is not conflicting with potentially opening for essential workers childcare.
Okay, Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a lot of concerns as well, and I'm glad our superintendent is framing this to get some information from the mayor in more detail. His want persons. As Ms. Dorr just stated as well, we decide to close the schools, the physical piece, to keep people safe. So I'm glad that Mr. Cameras did state that daily cleaning should not be done by our people, our custodial maintenance crews. However, when, in the event that we do have a school or two to be utilized, when the program is done, it needs to be sanitized. Again, we just finished paying a lot of money to have buildings sanitized. So when they're finished their program, that should be a part of the agreement. I'm suggesting that we have another deep cleaning all over again. Sliding scale concerns me. Sliding scale concerns me. I'm thinking about how many school buses do we have? I mean, we have so many bus routes. So just like over here in East End, for children that live in Fulton, and we have to, the suggestion is because of the air quality within the buildings, we only have two newer schools in the 7th district. Maybe three that can handle that part. But what's going to happen with the transportation piece? How will the parents get from their homes to a particular school? That's, I'd like to know what their transportation plan is. Also, so I understand the big picture is we're just going to give them a site, okay? Just going to give them a building with designated rooms or a wing. And we have no control left over that in terms of what's taking place day to day. Because the city will be utilizing whomever they have, they're utilizing the space. I would like to see them writing that we're not held liable, which in public schools is not held liable. I am very concerned because the equity piece, yeah, the equity piece concerns me greatly in terms of will every parent that wants his or her child to have daycare in a virtual setting, I understand that because of their work schedule. But will they be able to financially, if you have four, five, six, seven children and you're working, when the letter stated that, the mayor stated that he would also have in place, someone was looking into nonprofits in the areas. I received the question and just in brainstorming earlier about choices, let's say that my church has the opportunity to, in their Sunday school, in our Sunday school rooms, to have a program. Would my church be able to go to that school under the city and get that same coverage rather than being in the church? So who's, who are the nonprofits? I just want to make sure that also there are some families that want their children closer to home. So there are some families who would much rather have the babysitter down the street with two or three children. Will those persons be compensated as well under this? Or are you on your own? So my questions are, what I'm suggesting is, number one, who are the nonprofits? Number two, who will be in the buildings? Number three, is transportation going to be provided? Number four, I think I already stated the sliding scale per se, will there be any free spots? And number five, looking upon what took place in the spring at Carver, someone had to put together spaces for 400 students, which I'm thinking that you had to have the panels or screens or whatever, plexiglass, and only two students showed up? It's unfortunate that we don't have an opportunity to have a survey. But we do also do have a lot of daycares in the area that could handle this. So we close schools, however, they are public buildings. So, thank you.
All right, Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just two comments to wrap up sort of my thoughts on the approach moving forward. And that is that I think that any entity that is using our facilities, you know, on top of just asserting that they will do this, need to, we need to have something in writing, of course, to to set these standards. So what I'd like to see is some sort of draft proposal, whether that comes from the city or from our end. I don't know who has the administrative capacity at this point, but to incorporate into some form of memorandum of understanding with any organization that would be using our facilities. So here are the standards, and if these standards aren't met, then RPS has the ability to terminate that facility or relationship at some point. And then the other piece is related to the timeframe. So you know, I know a lot of families are really itching for childcare and child support right now. I'm sure many would would love to see this type of support in place when the traditional school year starts. But I earnestly do not feel a huge rush in the matter. I want to make sure that our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed before we move into these types of relationships. Because student safety is, you know, is first and foremost, I think, and child safety is first and foremost. So I would want to see some of this information documented before we move forward with these relationships.
All right, Ms. Cosby?
I too had a question about timing, but a slightly different approach. I didn't know if we had to or we should come back. I know we had originally thrown out August 31st as possibly a school board meeting date. We have voted on September 14th, but between now and September 14th, that's a pretty long time. So I didn't know if we needed to come together after Mr. Cameras. You can provide us with some additional information based on our feedback from today where we can talk more and give a final resolution or answer.
If I was going to raise the same point, as it stands right now, we aren't back together as a group until September 14th. So the board would not be able to take any formal action, assuming you wanted to take formal action until that time. So yeah, Ms. Owen, if...
Yeah, we will have to revisit that after after we're through with this discussion. Ms. Cosby, I think, let us finish this, and then if you feel that that's something you'd like to make a motion, I don't know if you want to have a meeting only for this on the 31st, or if you want to move the meeting from the 14th to 31st, so you ponder that.
No, I wasn't talking about moving the meeting, but I do think that we need to have a discussion only about this. I mean, it's very important. And and, you know, we have to provide some type of, we have to come to some type of resolution and provide some type of answer. And, you know, it's a lot of work to be done. So and I personally don't want, you know, we know that families will need childcare. I mean, we know that. And I don't want to keep families in limbo too much longer or longer than necessary. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of things I want to say here, and since I don't have anybody else in there, I'm going to take this moment. First of all, I am very cognizant of the fact that when we were choosing our option, we chose the option that did not permit us to bring some of our most vulnerable students and teachers into the building, even if they were small groups. So we've already said we weren't going to have anybody in the building. We haven't even allowed the teachers to come and teach from their classrooms. So, and we did that because we thought that to keep everybody safe, we had to make that decision. So that's one point I'd like to make. Second point I'd like to make is, who decides what children come or offered the slots? Is it the daycare providers? Is it, do we have to try and do some work for that? Which on top of our staffs already doing all they're doing to try to get our schools open virtually? And Ms. Dorr referenced not having virtual learning stations. Well, then what are they going to do with their kids during the day if they're not supporting our virtual learning? Are they school-aged children? And if they're school-aged children, then are they not in school that day? If there's not somebody facilitating virtual learning in our school building, then they're not getting their education. So I'm confused about that. So I would want that to be very clear. If that's a virtual learning station where somebody is facilitating our students learning, who chooses them? Who has to get all that together before September 8th? Seems like a big burden on our school personnel. And I really do feel like when we've told our teachers and made the decision not to include even our most vulnerable kids and their teachers, our special ed kids, our English language learners coming back to school, we said no, that was option four. We said no, not to that. So I have very big concerns about now saying, oh, okay, we can have our children in the building, but not our teachers with other people that they don't know, that have, we have no control over what they're doing. We have no control over who they are. I have a real problem with all of that. So that's my 10 cents. And now I see that Ms. Dorr would like to clarify. I'm sorry, Ms. Dorr, if I misstated.
Just a quick clarification. My point was Chesterfield, for example, has, I believe I read an article where they've opened up all of their buildings for anyone to come and experience virtual learning in the school. What I want to avoid is a situation in which we basically recreate our school setting virtually in our schools. So I, of course, the students that would be coming of essential workers would be experiencing our curriculum, but the point of us opening our schools would not be to entirely replace our teaching staff and fill up 24,000 kids in our schools and just do virtual. That was my point. That makes sense?
I'm sorry if I misspoke. I still have my same concerns. Who picks the kids? And I share the transportation thing. I think it's hard to say to teachers, you can't come in your classroom, but this other person can come in your classroom. I just, that just seems odd to me. So, but, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. Okay? Anybody else? All right. So then, Ms. Cosby, have you pondered? Do you want to say anything about?
Sorry. Yeah, I, yeah, I do think that we need to come together again, and I, you know, I'll throw out August 31st for that opportunity for us to have more of a discussion if that will allow Mr. Cameras enough time to get some answers, or do you think it'd take longer?
I can certainly by then put together a draft set of, I'll call them RPS expectations for use of RPS facilities, which would cover everything from cost to personnel to health and safety measures to liability to how kids get selected, how the partner gets selected, everything that's been raised tonight for the board to consider. And if that list of stipulations meets your meets your expectations, then the board could then on the 31st adopt that, and we could then make the facilities available on a limited basis based on those stipulations. It sounds like there's enough of an interest to at least sketch that out. And it sounds like there's enough of an interest to at least sketch that out to do so. But I do want to just double check because if there, if, if we do all that and you're still against it, I'd rather know that now than after spending time working on it. So it sounded to me like Ms. Cosby, Mr. Young, Ms. Door, Mr. Barlow were open to the idea, assuming the stipulations were right. Um, it sounded like Ms. Owen, Ms. Burke and Ms. Page were, um, less enthusiastic. Uh, so I'm just trying to judge, trying to get a little bit of a sense of how to go on this. I will, of course, um, if, if there is, if there's an appetite for me to sketch out, here are all the red lines, I can do that. And I can bring that back to you guys on the 31st and you can decide like, yep, that, that meets our expectations, go ahead. Or you know what? That's, that's, even that is not going to be enough. So I'm more than happy to do that, um, to, to support you in your decision making on this.
Okay, Ms. Burke? You're muted, Ms. Burke.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Cameras, would you please add to your list, a suggested number of students overall? Will it be a thousand? Will it be 500? Will it be? Because that will also dictate per se how many sites we would have. My other choice, my other thought, I don't know how this could be worded. I just want to make sure that every child, as Ms. Owen stated, who's going to be selected? I want to make sure that every child, every parent that wants his or her child in the program, whatever that program will be, at whatever site is, I want to see equally done. All right. I, I really, that's what concerns me the most. And that goes back to the transportation piece as well. But I want to see children from 7th district as well as any other district. So that, that's my, you all know, that's my biggest concern across the board, period. Because in the end, the sliding scale, how many free spots as well? All right. And then it also, I think in terms of, and I know we all have been reading the papers and the news, that some children now are getting COVID, teenagers as well. And then being mindful of going back home. And some persons, children are living in households with their grandparents. There's just so much there and that's why we made the decisions that we did. But as I stated, school buildings are public buildings. We don't own the buildings. So I, I understand that part. But, um, I just want to make sure, as, as Mr. Barlow stated, that there is something in writing and agreement and that we're not held liable. And you are correct, Mr. Cameras, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on this right now. I look forward to getting emails and phone calls and text messages from my constituency to, to help make this decision in the best interest of every child. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Page.
Thank you. Um, and I'm, I'm not going to repeat what has already been said by everyone around, um, in this Zoom meeting. I said, but what's really important to me to make sure that equity, we keep that first and foremost is our priority, ensuring that the children that really need that support, our families that need that support, they should be top priority. And just as Ms. Burke said, the 7th district, you know how I am about the 8th district. So, um, yeah, transportation is key because, yeah, I need childcare, but I don't have transportation to get my child to the place that's going to be providing the childcare. And again, if these, you know, essential worker, workers, you know, sliding scale, whatever it is, um, that every parent can, you know, be able to access childcare, whether it's free or what have you. And, um, yeah, I mean, we did, we closed the schools for a reason. And because of the unknowns and making sure that every child and our families, they are safe. Just like, I don't know if you all heard today, um, University of North Carolina, they only had school open, students returned, I think, for a week. They had to shut down. So, yeah, memorandum of understanding how all of this is, you know, is going to play out, I think it's going to be very, very critical imperative that, you know, we, you know, we have the information, but again, there are so many unknowns, but we have an agreement. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. And I'm just, um, listening to some of my colleagues and the concerns about equity and transportation. Um, I too share those concerns, but I, I want to also say that I think this is one piece of it. And that was what was discussed during the compact meeting too. And it, um, and it speaks to something else. So yes, the use of our facilities. But also we do have, as Ms. Burke mentioned, we have, let's say, a lot of faith-based communities who are coming together saying, look, we want to help out. Um, and we are opening, we talked about this during our last board meeting, and we're opening up our doors and we are reconfiguring our spaces to provide, um, as safe of an environment as, as, as we possibly can. And so it really begs the question too, not just the use of our facilities, but how are we partnering? And, you know, I don't know if this is RPS, just RPS conversation, RPS and city conversation. How are we partnering with other organizations that are not necessarily using our facilities, but have agreed to open up their spaces? Um, and not necessarily just for childcare, but you know, as a virtual learning hub, knowing that many of our young people may not be able to have, may not have the supports to connect and to, and to be actively engaged while at home. So I think we do have to talk about, and how do we support those organizations? So, you know, we have these organizations that need PPE, um, uh, well, I hate to say it, is it organ PPE equipment, but that's all I know. Yeah, they need that. So, um, you know, i- is, is, is the onus just going to be on them? Or do, or do we say, hey, city, state, whomever? You know, we all need to work to make sure these other entities that are supporting our students during this crisis, that, you know, we are helping to support them as well. So it's, it's, it's not just the use of our facilities. It's, it's also a conversation about how do we engage our community partners and support our community partners as they help our students? And that could include our churches. And, and we already know many of our churches have stepped up and raised their hands and said, yes, we're going to help because these are our children.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cosby. And I don't see any other comments, so let's just discuss this business about the 31st. Ms. Cosby said she didn't want to move the whole meeting back to the 31st. So are we just going to have a meeting to finalize this discussion? So let me see your faces, all you people hiding back there. Let me see your faces and thumbs if that's what we want to do for the 31st, is just talk about this, or if you want to move the whole, everything. So just talk about this on the 31st. I see Ms. Page is a yes, Ms. Burke is a yes, Mr. Young is a yes. Dr. Sapini, I believe that was a yes. Okay. Ms. Door, is that a yes? I don't see it. Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So then we will, Ms. Kent, Ms. Gibson, I'm not seeing you. Okay. Well, I think this, would you like to say something? Yeah. Ms. Burke?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so we're going to just discuss on the 31st or we're going to vote on the 31st?
We're going to decide on the 31st.
So we will vote on the 31st. All right.
Because people want to have it done.
Sure. And then we also will have public comment, correct? I think we should.
Okay.
Because we need to get a feel for who, say, excuse me?
I said, so we're going to have the meeting and with public comment, but that's the only thing-
Right. And that's it. I just want to make, yes, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that we have time for public comment first before making that decision. Because I really would like to hear from our community persons-
Okay.
Before we're making that decision completely. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anything else from anyone. So is there a motion to have an additional meeting on August 31st for the purpose of making the decision about using our buildings?
So move.
Second.
I think that was Mr. Barlow made the motion and Ms. Page seconded.
Yes.
Okay. Then let's have the vote. Ms. Wilson? Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson? Mrs. Gibson? Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms., uh, Owen? Yes. Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right. Thank you. Okay. So we have an extra meeting on the 31st. All right. Now, we receive reopening next steps.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Ms. Owen. I think given the hour, I'd really like to just open it up to any additional questions that the board may have. Um, I do want to note that the updated plan has been, uh, included on board docs. It's also on our website. Uh, anywhere that you see in green where it says added 8/17/20 is, um, something that's new. So let me just share my screen very quickly. Okay. So for example, you'll notice I'm showing you a new section of the academic office, uh, chapter, as it were. Uh, we received a number of questions from board members at our last meeting about various specific programs like Early College Academy. I know Ms. Page had asked AP and IB. I know Ms. Door had asked honors courses, space, RTC courses, a number of, uh, board members had asked. And you'll see it says added 8/17/20. So wherever a question has been added, uh, you'll see that. There's a couple of places where we have updated information. I think specifically in the talent office, uh, I'm delighted to report we're now at 94% filled. Uh, so we only have 25 vacancies remaining, uh, which, uh, interestingly, three years ago, on the first day of school, we had over 50 vacancies. Uh, so today, uh, a couple of weeks out, we're down to 25. Um, and I am cautiously optimistic we will get that down to zero by the start of school. Uh, and so you can see it says updated 8/17/20 here. Uh, so I don't want to take up your time kind of going through all of the additions. Uh, you can certainly do that, um, but I'm glad to answer, uh, any questions folks have about reopening generally.
Ms. Cosby?
It was hard to hear. Ms. Owen, can you say that again? It was hard to hear.
Ms. Cosby? I'm sorry, Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so this is, and you know what? If it's been updated and I just didn't see it, um, you know, just pardon me, but I just want to reiterate, and I've talked to you, Mr. Cameras, I've talked to Dr. Harris. I just want to reiterate, um, that, you know, as we talk about, um, as we continue forward with our virtual reopening in, in September, that we make sure that our families and especially, um, and our families that may have not connected, uh, the last semester and during the summer, that they are provided as much help in terms of, uh, demonstrations and, um, uh, whatever type of assistance we can provide, technical assistance we can provide. We do know that, you know, some people have complained that with the hotspots, they've gotten hotspots or they might not know how to connect it, or the hotspots might not be working in their area. Or, you know, some parents say, hey, I, I, I really don't know how to connect. I don't know how to log on. I'm not sure. And so as I mentioned before, if we can have, especially in our Mosby Court, our Witten Court, areas and Hillside Court areas, if we can have some standing times when there is some type of demonstration or people just know, hey, I know on Mondays at such and such a time, there's going to be somebody at the community center who can answer a question about how I connect. Um, and, and this from before we start school through, um, even through the end of September. So I, I, I just want to make sure that we do everything possible to make sure that our students are indeed connected. And also I will go back to and I'll just reiterate it again. And then does it, yes, for those organizations outside of the ones that, you know, the city has mentioned, the nonprofits and what have you, that will be using our facilities to make sure that we are partnering with them and providing support, um, our professional development, you know, what the curriculum looks like, um, to, you know, if they need textbook, I, I don't know, Plexiglas, but whatever supports we can provide, because that's going to be crucial as we talk about. We use equity, but we, we, we need to make sure that our, our families are indeed connected. And we do know that many of our families have not been.
Yes. And, and Ms. Cosby, as, as you and I discussed, one of the things we're looking at is expanding our mobile, uh, tech support. Right now we have a few locations, uh, in the city, uh, but we're looking to expand that to, uh, potentially the, on a rotating basis, the six, um, major housing developments to make sure that that service is available. Uh, so we're looking at how to make that happen, um, as, as we speak. Ms. Owen, you're on mute.
Am I frozen?
No. Ms. Owen, you're on mute.
Yeah. I, I got kicked off. So I'm sorry. When I came back in, I was muted. All right. Mr. Young, then Mr. Barlow, Dr. Sapini, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Door.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions, but, uh, I want to be respectful of all my colleagues. So I'm just going to limit them to a couple right now. But the first pertains to a discussion we had a while ago and specifically the, the 3.4 attendance and, and, uh, I understand, respect, we're still working through that, but, um, just wanted to inquire if we- if we could have a little more conversation this evening about what that, what we think that may look like. If, and I think it was Scott who asked a question in regards to maybe what other school districts are considering doing, any kind of guidance from the state, so my first question pertains to 3.4 attendance and kind of what that's gonna, what that may look like. The second, the second question pertains to something that Felicia just addressed, and specifically, and this came up actually earlier in the evening when I asked the question of Harry about tracking who was logging in, and that part of the conversation was relevant to Spartan Academy, but it seems, it seems to me that it's gonna be essential that that we, that we are tracking that data regularly, I know at a preceding meeting, perhaps at our last meeting, I think, we had a discussion about, for lack of a better description, when do we check in, when do we identify if we have to iterate in a significant way? And so my, so the second question pertains to what that can look like, tracking data specific to schools and/or even classrooms to give us some idea what, what's working, what's not working. I don't know that we need to do it by classroom, it seemed to me schools perhaps, but I defer to counsel my colleagues and administration staff on that. And then, and then the other, the other part of that is, I guess, a question not only for the administration, but for my colleagues, and specifically, do we identify now? It would seem to me perhaps that we should identify a date, some, sometime in the chronology of when we say, okay, this is, this is when we will size up, if things are working like we anticipated they're working, or or if they've just gone off the rails, I know that they won't, but if they have, and do we have to take some major course correction? And then lastly, for now, because I've already spoken for so long, what specifically, a lot of conversation, a lot of my neighbors are concerned relative to particularly our youngest students, and folks have had all kinds of terrific recommendations, but those students that are still, for example, learning to read and developing reading capabilities, and what, what that'll look like, and what's more, normally, and I know that we have in the plan some information relevant to our community partners, but how can we continue to virtually engage those partners to support, for example, literacy, et cetera? So I apologize, I know that was a lot, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Owen, I could respond to some of that now, if you would like.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Young. On attendance, I don't have a ton more to share this evening, I think that the short answer is there is a mechanism through Aspen, our student information system, where teachers will take attendance each morning as they normally would, at the high school level, the middle school level will take attendance by period as well. And that will be fairly typical. Where we are working on the details is for a student who's not there, what is the mechanism by which they're able to demonstrate an alternative attendance demonstration, and the state has given a lot of flexibility on that, we just need to boil that down into some clear guidance for our teachers and our families, and that's what we're working on. We should have that soon, and I'm more than happy to circulate that to the board over email. And of course, we'll share broadly with the community via RPS Direct and other mechanisms as well. So that is the word on attendance. As for tracking kids who are logging in, absolutely, this is gonna be very different from the spring, where we didn't have student identifiable information. Tracy, can you share a little bit more about how we'll be able to understand which kids are showing up, logging in, and which not, just a little bit more on that?
Sure, good evening. The primary mechanism is still going to be through the teacher and utilizing the tools around attendance and how we trigger supports through our Connect RPS program, which has been outlined in our plan in terms of outreach and support. So just wanna emphasize, that's the most important piece, to catch students well before any data gets aggregated. The, the second piece is through our, through our specific platforms based on grades and subjects, we can, we can report out usage data and login data, because we use different types of instructional tech tools built into the blended learning design, that's not going to be an apples to apples. For example, the lower grades might use something like iReady for math and ELA, and the upper grades might use something like Dreambox. So the way we report that data out, we'll need to figure out how to make that as clean and comparable. But the, and then we're certainly still, we're researching what it looks like for a student to log into Google Classroom. Now, we can report out whether they are logging in, but we don't know if that's active learning per se. So again, the teacher in the attendance mechanism is still going to be the primary path for tracking student engagement.
And while I have you, could you just say a word about reading instruction for the younger grades, as Mr. Young asked? Just how we're approaching it?
Sure, similar, I mean, as we've outlined in our plan, this is a blended model, so, I mean, teachers will be delivering live instruction with students going through the foundational skills that students need in small group, typically a very short whole group lesson followed by small group instruction. Additionally, some resources we have are, our EL partners with our curriculum have a K2 video library for all of the Read Alouds that are part of our curriculum. So students or teachers can, teachers can have students watch those videos if students need to access that text differently. And then also, EL offers, will be offering a comprehensive set of videos for teachers delivering all of the foundational skills lessons, which are typically phonics and fluency in the lower grades.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Young, you asked about sort of the iteration date, or the point at which we would, you know, reflect and potentially shift. It's interesting, we actually talked about that as a leadership team this morning. I don't have that exact date for you just yet, but I do wanna do some thinking on that, here's what I will say. I'm certain there will be some changes that we're gonna have to make, this has never been done before. So I feel very confident in our plan, I think it reflects the best thinking of dozens of teachers and families and all kinds of other specialists. But I imagine there will be things that come up and we're gonna wanna make those adjustments. I think some will be minor, that we'll make in the moment. I think others will be more significant that I would wanna bring back to the board. My commitment to you is, you know, at every meeting during our virtual semester, to share with you updates on what's working and what we need to look at. I think there's probably a point in, you know, towards the end of October, once we've been in this six to eight weeks, where we could say, alright, if we needed a major shift, this is what it would be. And then I think the next real critical touch point is early December, when I think we would have to very seriously begin to be talking about whether to proceed with virtual come the second semester, or to bring folks back, and I think it would be important to make that decision by around December 15th. So as we go into the holiday break, families know what's gonna happen come February. So again, I see sort of the end of October as a critical point, and then sort of early mid-December as a critical point. Those would be the two guideposts that I'd sort of be working towards.
Okay, now, Mr. Barlow, then Dr. Sapini, Ms. Gibson, and Ms. Door.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, Ms. Cosby and Mr. Young addressed a couple of the issues that I wanted to bring up. One in particular is with respect to the IT support, and I think having strategically placed help desks of sorts would be very helpful, but I'm really feeling for our IT staff heading into this, I think this is such a a broad deployment of IT resources compared to what we've done in the past, that I imagine that this could turn into a pretty overwhelming experience for those folks. So please keep us in a loop about what types of supports we need, or whether we need additional support, or what types of issues we're running into with implementing this rollout, because we don't wanna, you know, three or $400 device and internet connection to deprive our children of educational opportunities, so anything that we can do to be supportive, or anything that the IT staff needs in particular to help do their jobs more effectively, I wanna keep in mind. Mr. Young also brought up the review of our progress, I know that as you mentioned, this is something that hasn't been done before, and I'm confident that we will be hearing from stakeholders about any issues that may come up, or any opportunities for improvement. So I'm glad to hear that the administration is going to also brief us and allow for discussion and room for improvement. The last, last piece is really with respect to translating these broader proposed schedules that we have into actual student schedules. So you know, I think that there's been a fair amount of discussion about the amount of screen time some of our students, particularly our youngest students will be exposed to. But I'm also curious to know sort of what types of feedback you've been getting from from our principals, teachers, and other stakeholders with respect to the amount of time our students are expected to spend in front of screens, and then also to get a better idea of where we are in the scheduling process, and what types of supports we're providing for our building-level administrators to help map out their schedules, because the last thing I want is, you know, obviously, a lot of thought has gone into these plans, and I know that a lot can be dumped onto our building-level administrators to make things work, and our teachers to make things work, and of course, we expect that. I think there's, as you've mentioned before, Mr. Cameras, there's an expectation that there's going to be, going to need to be sort of a higher level of grace and patience with respect to a lot of the implementation, but I also wanna make sure that we are providing all of the support that our principals and teachers and other building-level leadership need to actually lay out these schedules in effective manners. So I'm curious to know where we are in that process, and what the discussions have been like with our building-level administrators at this point.
Yeah, you know, the master schedule, which ultimately drives, you know, which teacher you have, and when you have your encore classes, or when you have algebra and Spanish and how everything all works, those are being generated right now with our school leaders, counselors, and so on. I know Mr. Hughes and his team are working with folks on that. The goal is to have all of those schedules communicated the week of August 31st, and that's when, you know, families and students would know the specifics of, you know, how their day will flow. And I believe we have indicated that in the updated reopening plan as well. As for the schedules generally, I think by and large, it has been positive, I think, you know, a lot of it came out of the work with the Reopening Task Force, which had a good number of teachers and administrators and families, and so I think it reflects a lot of, a lot of that. I do wanna caution anyone who's watching this evening, I know there is a understandable tendency to just jump to the end time of a schedule and draw some conclusions about the length of a day, or how much time kids are on screens, and that is, that is not the best way to approach it for a couple of reasons. One, I wanna remind everyone that unlike the counties, and unlike many jurisdictions, we have a very high poverty rate, and making sure our kids eat every morning is our very first priority. And so we are taking a lot of time every morning, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., to run our entire bus system, our entire bus system, to distribute food to over 1,000 bus stops every morning. That is why we're not starting until 9:15. And not nine, because some kids are gonna get their food at nine, we wanna give them a second to eat before class starts. So on the screen at 9:15, that's, that's what we're going with. Now, let's take the pre-K schedule for a second, and I know pre-K has gotten a lot of attention because they're little ones. Yeah, the day goes, I think technically the end time is two something, but in the middle of the day is two and a half hours for lunch, for a nap, and for recess and playtime. So that, to me, is developmentally appropriate, and I think that's what early childhood folks would say as well. And so when you actually look at the amount of time, it actually is fairly comparable, I'm not gonna say it's exactly the same. Also, I wanna be clear, just because you have 30 minutes, or 40 minutes, or whatever it is that says math in the schedule, that does not mean you are on a screen looking at a teacher for that whole time period. It may be five minutes, it may be seven, it may be 10, and the remainder, you're, if you're a little one, you're doing some sort of play, and if you're an older child, you're doing some sort of independent work, or small group work. So even if you look at just the time that is dedicated for instruction, that does not mean that is all live on the screen. In an English class, let's take high school. Yeah, it's a 90-minute period under a four-by-four, that does not mean you're sitting in front of the computer for 90 minutes looking at a teacher. There's probably 20, 30 minutes of that, and then you have assigned work, maybe you're reading a chapter of a novel, maybe you are breaking off and having a conversation with one other student, maybe you're writing for 30 minutes. And so I really wanna just make sure that's clear, and I know it's our responsibility to communicate that as best as possible, but we are weaving in live and not live, synchronous and not synchronous. And so it's hard to show exactly this number of minutes is on the screen, and this number of minutes is off the screen. But my commitment to you is that it's an appropriate balance, and, you know, teachers are gonna do their best to find that rhythm, we're gonna do our best to support them in finding that rhythm. I will tell you, when I started doing Mr. Kay's 30 minutes of math, I had in my mind, I needed to like be teaching for 30 straight minutes, being on camera, talking to kids, and I quickly realized that was really hard for me, and it was really hard for them. And so if you go back and watch the episodes, not that anyone has the time or the inclination to do so, you'll see that it begins to shift. Within a few days, I realized, oh, I need to do like a burst of something for three to five minutes, and then I assign them a problem, and I just played some music and let them do the problem for two or three minutes. Then we came back, had a quick chat, I assigned a couple more, they go off for five to seven minutes and come back, and that was how it went. So it was 30 minutes, but I would say the kids were on screen five to seven minutes. So I just wanna make sure folks have that in their, in their minds' eye as you're thinking about these schedules, and, you know, I take it, I do think one piece of feedback we've gotten is we have to do a better job of communicating that, so that people don't just look at, you know, start time and end time, I think everything in there then is on screen, it is not.
Okay, thank you. So that was
So that was Mr. Young, then it's Mr. Barlow, then Dr. Sapini, Ms. Gibson, and Ms. Dorr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As much as I'd like to go again, that was me that time.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then Dr. Sapini, then Ms. Gibson, Ms. Dorr, Mr. Young. Sorry, Mr. Barlow.
The first part of what I was going to ask really was touched upon by Mr. Young, and I believe Mr. Barlow, it pertained to tracking of students and teachers, but also for the sake of identifying, quickly identifying those who are in most need as far as any kind of tutoring helpful students, but also even computer assistance for the teachers. And also, the second part is what's happening with our substitutes? That and a couple of questions from folks who were concerned that they just didn't know what was happening pertaining to the substitute teachers.
Let me start with the subs. We most definitely will have subs. Our current plan at this point is to basically put in place as many long-term subs as we can, and assign them to buildings based on size and need, so that there's a constant presence there. So when somebody's out, we don't have to scramble to find a sub. But there's someone there who already knows the virtual school and the faculty, and they can jump right in.
Sorry, I was going to say, will they also get some sort of training, PD, so that they can kind of smoothly transition to, you know, the same way that the regular teachers are?
Yeah, we're going to invite them to just about, you know, all of the other PD that we'll be doing. We're also even trying to get additional teacher kits for the subs as well. So we've set aside some funds for that, because we want them to be well-equipped to do that work. Your question before the subs, I apologize if you can remind me.
No, no, the basic, the tracking piece to quickly identify students or teachers that were in need of help, whether there was tutoring or computer help, in that nature.
Yeah, I think on the teacher's side, we are very blessed to have so many great IT RTs. So this is really a moment to shine as an IT RT, where really, your job is instructional technology resource teacher. And I think we have great folks like Stacy Green and Ashley Land, and so many others who've done this amazing work over the summer and the spring to help educators. We even had Ms. Diaz, who created a whole video about how to set up her classroom at home. And so we're sharing that. So I think there's going to be a lot of school-based support for teachers. And then for kids, going back to what Dr. Up said earlier, you know, Mr. Camaras has his group of, say, 24 5th graders. And, you know, if I realize, I notice the first week that four of them just aren't showing up, or they show up for 5 minutes and then they're gone. Well, we're going to capture that and use the resources that Harry was talking about with Connect RPS to then say, all right, how do we go find out what's happening with these families? If we never had any contact with them, are they still in Richmond? We got to find out if they are. But, you know, they showed up once, and then they disappeared. Well, maybe there's a tech issue, or maybe there's a childcare issue. And so what we will quickly do is kind of tier the kids, and then reach out and provide the supports that they need. Easier said than done, but that's exactly how we're thinking about it, so that we can quickly respond, and at least take care of the relatively easy issues, the tech. I didn't know, I don't have a schedule, things like that. And then try to tackle the deeper issues that may involve social services.
Right, yeah, I was very fearful of anyone, whether students or teachers, kind of falling behind in any way, for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sapini, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Dorr, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to just, you know, I appreciated Mr. Camaras kind of talking through a bit more to kind of speak to what the school day may be like. You know, that said, I still have significant concerns about the length of the school day. And as I'm listening to, you know, the illustration, I'm thinking to myself, you know, my kids aren't going to feel any better when they hear, you know, when they hear this. It's a long day. And, you know, one of the things that I've mentioned earlier is the need for having some more regional approach to this. And I'm sympathetic for, you know, those parents that are working in the district but have kids in Chesterfield, and, you know, their kids are going to be done, you know, 1 o'clock, and they'll still be perhaps teaching until later in the afternoon. So, you know, it's going to be a challenge for them. And it is a very long day, you know, and I understand there are stops and starts. But the kids I know, it's, once they stop, it's going to be hard to get them started again. And so, you know, as a parent myself, my preference would be to really have a nice dedicated amount of time when, you know, we'll have, the tension will be there, and kind of getting it out of the way so that the rest of the day, you know, there's time for a bit more ease as we've been cooped up in our houses, you know? And it's a stressful time for everyone right now. I would like to hear more input in terms of the morning and the drop-off, the food drop-off, as I think I'm maybe not understanding what the complexity of that delivery is, since I understand we're going to every stop, but we would go to every stop during the school year to get kids to school. So I'm not sure why, you know, if we had high school kids that were able to get to school by 7:15, you know, why we're not able to have anyone start until the 9 o'clock time. So it would be helpful to kind of see how that is going to work. You know, I've also heard of other districts where they're recording things so that, you know, kids can listen another time. And I think if there's any benefit to having virtual school at all, it should be the flexibility of the program. And so it saddens me that we're not able to take advantage of that to meet the diversity of needs, I could think, across the district in terms of parents working and such. And then, and then finally, my question is, or two other things. One is reiterating my request for a budget to look at, you know, all of the implications in terms of the start of the school year. And then also to go back to preparing for reopening in person. So if the board is going to be making a decision in December on whether we will reopen in person or not for second semester, you know, I think it's important we begin to get updates in terms of the work that's being done to prepare. I think we have no choice but to assume that we will open in person. Maybe that won't happen, you know, I may not vote in support of that. But regardless, we have to be prepared for when it does happen. And in order for the schools to be open, we need to have working sinks. We need to make sure that we are going to be able to have nurses on staff. And I'm sure there are many, many other considerations that need to be considered, and it's going to take time to do that work. And so I ask that we get detailed updates on where that is at all of our subsequent meetings as we move forward. Because regardless of whether it's happening now or later, it has to happen. And I think we owe, you know, we need to kind of see how things are coming together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Dorr, then Mr. Young.
So just to note, I thought a great idea coming from Ms. Sears, principal at TJ, was engaging the community to have IT community volunteers armed and ready to go. So I'm sure you guys are thinking about that, but I thought it was a great idea, and, you know, a great way to engage some of our neighborhood associations, faith groups, et cetera. Just want to reiterate many of the things that some of my colleagues have said. I think it would be great to get, similar to how we have our formal calendar for our school board, but maybe we can update that with the key decision points and check-in points related to, you know, this fall semester, so that we can just be prepared for what we're talking about when, and when the decision points are going to be made. And maybe we can get feedback on that calendar. And I also, you know, I think we are moving at rapid pace. I mean, we just made this decision a little over a month ago. And so I do think that there is going to be the need for real-time feedback from parents, teachers, students. And I think that's a, you know, it's going to be really hard, but I also think it's kind of an opportunity for us to be nimble and take feedback and change. And so I just want to empower you and the administration to please come to us with changes. I don't think that if things are going well, I don't think it's an indictment on you guys. And I think, I think this is a great opportunity for us to be creative and respond quickly. And so to that end, I would also request that there are some formal pathways for people to offer feedback, both now and as we continue throughout the school year. And then two questions. One is related to, just a note, we talked about this this morning, but just on Albert Hill Spanish, the number of Spanish students have nearly doubled year over year. And I'm worried about the staff-to-student ratio. So I just want to make a note about that. But also, related to middle school electives, I'm hearing from a number of middle school teachers about different schedules at the middle school level. So if one school has four classes, and one school has six, then there's a differential in how many classes of electives teachers will have to teach across our middle schools. And so, you know, just wanted to flag that. I put it in an email to you. But I do think that having equity of course offerings and equity of student load for our middle school teachers is important. And then finally, just had a question on, well, a note. One positive of starting later is that there's a lot of brain science that says, at least for our middle and high school kids, that starting later is good for them. So at least there's, at least there's that. But I did have a question about video EC hours, and whether, you know, the reason why our day has to be a certain number of hours is related to state requirement, or what flexibility we have there.
Just real quickly on that, we don't yet have flexibility on that. And that is certainly one of the constraints we face, though, you know, different divisions are approaching that in different ways. But, yeah, I'll gather up the information on the Albert Hill issue and the middle school elective teachers as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young?
Thank you. I'll abbreviate my comments because I really like what Liz had to say and how she said it. I do concur, it's an opportunity for us to innovate. But, and what's more, because I trust our teachers so much, you know, everyone on this board knows, for four years, I've been advocating for autonomy for our teachers. And I hope that, in what I've heard from the superintendent, from staff, and from my colleagues, but I just wanted to say it in a very direct way, is that we are going to defer to our teachers, acknowledging that that this is going to be unlike anything that we've done before. And to that end, I think we have to provide all the latitude in the world to our teachers to innovate and be creative as it relates to, for example, how in the world do you, with a seven-year-old, for example, start and stop and get students back, for lack of a better description, back on the virtual live after they have been working on an assignment or something off-screen? I'm not sure that I have the answers to all that, but I'm confident that all of our amazing 2,000 teachers do. So this is a long, roundabout way of saying that I know that everyone, all my colleagues and the team, all agree that we really should be, more than ever, deferring to our folks on the front lines, because they're going to need that latitude to be really creative in problem-solving. So I look forward to, like Liz said, some good to come out of all this, so this really bad. Thank you.
Okay. I see no further questions or comments. So let's move on to receive an update on the 90-day review of the RPD MOU.
Thank you, Chair Owen. I would like to call on Mr. Hughes to present this.
Thank you. Jason, can you share your screen again, please? All right, good evening again. I'll just wait for the screen to pop up. All right. At this time, I'll provide an update on our memorandum of understanding with the Richmond Police Department. The content in this deck is a mix of responses to school board members and some survey data. If you look at the first question, school resource officers are the only ones who make an arrest. They make these determinations by looking at several factors, such as if there's probable cause, parent demand for an arrest, severity of injuries. I'll note that Virginia law requires an arrest in some, for some cases, such as domestic assault. With regards to what an arrest looks like, handcuffs are used when there is an imminent need to protect students and staff. Also, it's standard RPD protocol that a student who was arrested must leave school in a police car is handcuffed. However, if an arrest is based on a juvenile violation report, which is what happens when an officer believes that a crime has been committed by a juvenile, in these cases, handcuffs aren't used. And in most instances, the student is just released to the parent without going to jail. Kids do have the ability to be fingerprinted at school, which is what prevents them from having to go to jail to, for lack of a better term, get processed. If you look at the simple assault data from last year, you'll see that most of the victims were other students. And of all the different types of assaults reported by schools this past year, about 10% of those ended up in the arrest of a student. The next six slides will show staff and student feelings about their interactions with SROs. This data was compiled as part of the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services School Climate Survey, which is administered each year, targeting a different set of students. This year, the survey was distributed to our high school students, and last year, the survey was distributed to our middle school students. Slide 3 shows the students' perceptions, excuse me, slide 3 shows the high school students' perceptions of SROs in schools. The data shows two things. First, the majority of high school students feel safer with an SRO in their school, and many students have not spoken to the SRO during the last year. Slide 4 has data related to staff perception at the high school of SROs. This data shows that in most cases, at least half, the staff feels safer with an SRO in the school. If you look just at the agree and strongly agree categories. And that about 3/4 of all the high school staff that completed the survey felt that SROs make a positive contribution to their. Slide 5 asks the high school staff to discuss the frequency of communication with SROs in their building. And as you can see, most staff had at least weekly communication with the SROs, while about 40% of while about 40% of all high school staff spoke with their SRO daily. Slide six repeats the questions from slide three, but the data shows our middle school students' experiences with SROs. Similar to high school students who completed the survey, the majority of the students, in most cases, felt, feel safer with an SRO in school. And about 50% of students have not spoken to the SRO during the last year, or actually, excuse me, during two years ago. So remember, this middle school survey data is two years old. Slide seven presents data for our middle school staff. Now, unlike the high school staff, a majority of middle school staff, four out of six, had fewer than 40% of the staff say they felt safer with an SRO in school, if you were just looking at the agree and strongly agree categories. And about half the middle schools had 50% of, or more of their staff feel that the SRO made a positive contribution to the school. While the other 50% of schools had less than 50% of staff feeling that SROs made a positive contribution to, to the school. Again, just looking at agree, strongly agree. Slide eight asked the middle school staff to talk about the frequency of communication with SROs in the building. And at all middle schools except for one, at least 50% of the staff reported either weekly or daily communication with the SRO. On the next slide, you will see how we have currently deployed our 63 SSOs. Finally, the last slide shows our, our past school security personnel for the entire department. And the budgeted cost and outlines the type of training our SSOs go through. I do think it's important to note that our SSOs participate in more than the minimal amount of hours required by the Department of Criminal Justice Services. All right, and I'll pause there for questions.
Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Hughes, for the presentation here. I am curious to know in particular when the surveys went out. I know that you mentioned the middle school one is two years old and the high school one is one-year-old, but, or within the past year. But do you have any specifics related to what dates these went out? So we've got a better idea of how current or how stale this may potentially be.
Yes, I believe, and I'm going to have to look this up, but I believe that the surveys are initially distributed in November, December of the academic year. And then results come back, I believe, in January or February. So the data for this school year for our high schools is pretty fresh.
And then have we had any kind of formal feedback? I mean, outside of public comment and outside of some of the public discussions that we've had, has there been any RPS initiated survey data or anything else to this point, given the more recent climate?
No, there hasn't been any formalized surveys put out. We are, when I say we, jazz miles of rising sophomore at Richmond Community, and I are still attempting to engage middle school and high school students in community forums about their experience, for, for them to tell us about their experiences with SSOs. But no, no more formalized, no more formalized surveys have been distributed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Gibson.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Harry. I just wanted to clarify from Mr. Barlow, this year the surveys were administered in February. So a little bit more recently than what Harry mentioned.
Well, thank you, Michelle.
Okay. So Ms. Gibson and then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I appreciate the additional information from the administration, but I, I question our ability to really get to the bigger question, which is how can we make, how can we improve the climate and culture of our schools? So, I mean, I think we can all recognize that there's room for improvement, you know? Kids are getting into fights at schools and there's, there's disruptive behavior. And in that setting, if you're asking staff, you know, do you want to get rid of these folks? Then no, because the, the climate, there's, it's, it's a problem, you know? And there's, there's room for improvement. And so, and so, you know, right now, we have a system that's not working as we would like it to be. And so I don't think the question is whether we, you know, I mean, it's not just about eliminating a role. We have to define what this, what a vision for something that's better. And so, and so I think that there's been a lot of concern in the community when we're talking about eliminating these positions. And it's understandably so, because we haven't, we haven't engaged in the discussion about what else could this be, you know? How can we make this better? And without that discussion, everyone is understandably scared to eliminate the only thing that they know of, that they believe provides some sense of, of safety and, and improves the climate. So, so we can't have this discussion about taking this system out without also having the discussion about what's next, you know? And this is a moment, we are in the midst of, you know, this is a revolutionary moment. This is the time to be talking about what's next. And so, you know, I, I think that there are two, two things that we have to look at, both preventative measures and then measures that address those things that happen in the moment, you know? And, and so I very much support having more counselors in our schools, absolutely. And I definitely support, you know, enhancing our restorative justice practices. But there's also room for improvement of what happens in the heat of the moment. And what is the staff, what is the training, what is the expertise we need for those folks? Some type of behavior interventionist, I don't know if that's the right word for it or not, but we need something else. And that something else also ripples into what alternative education looks like. It ripples into what discipline looks like. This is what we should be talking about right now. Because, you know, to just to say, you know, do you want to have this thing yes or no? That's, that's, that's really not, that's not really solving the problem, you know? There, there's a reason why we have SROs in the schools. And so we have to, we have to get at that. And we need to be having that conversation. I have sat in far too many disciplinary hearings and felt, you know, it's heartbreaking, you know? Because every single one of those students that's faced with the possible expulsion, I mean, that's, that's on us to reckon with, you know? And, and, and from my perspective, it goes without saying, are we making things better by giving those kids a record too? Absolutely not. So let's talk about what else we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page, and then Mr. Young.
Thank you. My question, what determines, what's the determination of the SRO, you know, assigned to a school? Because, you know, we know we have some middle schools in particular, no SROs, and then we have others that do. So what was the determining factor to place SRO at some schools versus not having a SRO? So that's my question.
Ms. Page, that's a great question. And just to answer in full transparency, Mauricio and I continued assignments that were in place prior to our arrival in RPS. Of course, we consider principal voice situations that are occurring in the community or have occurred in the community, a number of factors. But right now, we had just continued past practices, and we have not had a compelling reason as of right now to change those assignments, even though there are times where we do shuffle SSO, or, I'm sorry, I'm talking about SSOs. You asked about SROs, I apologize. I would just say that we pretty much have continued past practices.
And that's what I figured, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Young, and then Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And at the risk of pointing out what's patently obvious to every, everyone, the Department of Criminal Justice Service, Services data demonstrates that our, our students and our faculty and staff overwhelmingly support the SROs. I don't need to tell you that, you have the data in front of you. But to Kenya's point, you know, one of the thing, one of the opportunities, it seems to me, we have for, for an opportunity for improvement pertains to cell phones, use of, and cellphone policy in our building and use of, use of cell phones. We've had that discussion before. Candidly, we kind of punted on that. But, you know, one of, one of our principals, who will go nameless, shared with me once, and I know that they were speaking likely for a lot of their colleagues, other principals across the district, that nearly all the problems in the building could be attributed, at least partly, to the cellphone. And, and we know, we know now how, not terribly long ago, when, when we were all in school, an incident may involve a few people. But now, because of the cellphone, it, it now can involve the entire, entire school. And, and so anyhow, so my point is to address Ms. Gibson's inquiry. And I would propose, and by no means am I limiting the discussion to this one issue, but, but one tangible, it seems to me, a policy discussion that we should be having as a board in concert with the staff relates to our cellphone policy. And, and we know, and it's not, and the truth is, when we're talking about culture and climate, I mean, one of my, one of my dear friends, she speaks to, for example, how some of the really tragic circumstances related to, you know, people, and this is bigger than RPS, granted, but posting all, you know, posting all kinds of pictures on, on, on social media and, and other young person seeing it, think that, that that's something they should aspire to. And if they're not that, then they're something, somehow less than that. And so everything it does for a person's body image concerns, I mean, I would, I would really like for us to revisit cellphone policy use. And, and perhaps now, because our buildings are closed and we're going to be virtual, it's the time, time to do it, to think forward to next, when we are back in school. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I mean this in no way as a slight to Mr. Young or to any of my more senior colleagues, but we did have cell phones when I was in high school. I thought I'd note that for the record. But setting, setting that aside, I do think, you know, the situation that we found ourselves in is presented with us with a significant opportunity, not just to talk about an up or down vote on SROs. And I do think that a lot of the conversation has revolved around that. And I know that Ms. Gibson hit on, on some of these points earlier, but if we're really going to have meaningfully, meaningful discussions about this, then I think, and in particular around the SRO issue, then I think we, we really have to take into account some key factors and how we would address those factors in the event of a change in how we operate with SROs or SSOs. And one, of course, is to ensure that we have a way to ensure that we are protecting our, our students and teachers and others in the building. So some level of security. And then, of course, there is the matter of preventing certain behaviors, whether that be with intervention. And then there's also how we go about responding to those behaviors. And of course, there are security implications there, but also the, the matter of restorative justice. So I think if we are to meaningfully consider how to reform these practices or meaningfully even consider whether we are going to continue with our relationship with RPD in the form it's in, or with our SSO practices in the form that they're in, then I would want to not view that in a vacuum, not view that in a, let's just toss out the relationship and see where the cards lie, but also have, but actually have a, a meaningful alternative and one that ensures safety, addresses the, the behavioral challenges that we face from a more root cause issue, and then also addresses security. And when we have those discussions, I know that the SRO issue comes up a lot. I also know that there's been a fair amount of discussion about the SSOs. I do want to have a better understanding of the types of folks that are being brought into these roles, what the pay looks like and what the training looks like for some of those positions as well. Because I think when you're taking a look at these pictures, you have to look at them holistically. I mean, it's easy, I was actually surprised at how quickly some school divisions took SROs out, because it didn't seem to me that there was enough time to actually implement a, a plan to help provide supports for, you know, that, that may be lacking. But then the, the other piece here that I think we have to keep in mind is the limited utility in some respects of SROs, given state changes to the code. So if we know that our SROs are not going to be involved in other more routine disciplinary matters, if we know that they're not likely going to be making arrests for drug issues, things of that nature, I want to have an understanding of how much value we think they are bringing to us outside of, you know, being there to, of course, enforce the law and whether we may be able to, you know, have that same level or similar level of support to address legal issues by maintaining some level or relationship with the police department to respond to significant matters. And whether we may be able to provide those additional supports using the funds, as we've discussed before. So whether that mean more counselors, whether that mean altering our approach to assignment and training of other security personnel and things of that nature. But I'll say that this data that we presented with tonight is certainly interesting. I don't think it necessarily takes, takes the, I'd be pretty curious to see exactly what those surveys looked like, given that they do come from an entity that may not have, that may not be as objective as we're trying to look at this matter. And given that the, the survey data was taken well before some of the issues that were, that helped spur some of these discussions, could sort of inform how we interpret it. But I will say that, that some of the student discussions, or at least one of the student discussions that I had the opportunity to tune into was very illuminating as far as how some of our students feel and about the relationship. So I look forward to continue to, continue discussion of this matter. But whenever we do get to a point, when we do get to a point where we're considering a plan, I don't want it just to look like termination of the MOU, removal of SROs in a vacuum, without understanding what types of supports we need to be backfilling with.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Page, then Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Dr. Sapini.
Thank you. I apologize, my allergies are acting up, but I, I do have a follow-up question. So, and Mr. Hughes, you answered part of the question that the assignments of the SROs is just based on past practices. So before we make our decision to remove SROs or to keep them, keep them, what have you, we need to revisit that. The assignment of our SROs, you know, in making our decision going forward. So I think that's, you know, not just do something because, oh, that's the way we, we've done it for the last 10 years, so we're going to continue to do it that way. So that is, that's what I wanted to, you know, make clear. I want to revisit. I want to revisit, I think we need to revisit that in totality as we make a decision. Because whatever we decide, you know, if we decide to take them out to school, we have to have alternative plan. So, thank you. And also, the next focus group meeting is when?
So the next community hearing.
No, with the students.
With the students. So the high school focus group is on the 27th.
Okay.
Now Jazz and I did have a middle school focus group on the 13th, but we didn't get as much, we didn't get as much participation as we would have liked. So we, we do plan to try to reconvene or convene again another group of middle school students.
Yeah, I, I think that, that will be really important to hear from the middle school students. So, yeah, we really need to make an effort. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. It's Cosby and then Dr. Sapini.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I agree with my colleagues and, you know, Ms. Page just mentioned something about an alternative plan. I'll let you know right now, I'm not in favor of removing or SROs. And we have nothing, just to remove SROs, you know, that makes no sense to me if we're not having an alternative plan. And I'll tell you just from my conversations with administrators and teachers at MLK, that, you know, there, and that we've heard it before, that the SRO is definitely a value add. And there are some instances, I know there's been a concern about the school to prison pipeline, but they've articulated that there have been many instances whereas the SRO has actually helped to diffuse situations so that it didn't go any further, so that a student was not placed in the system. So I am very glad to hear that our conversation is softening a bit with this. As I articulated before, we're the ones who kind of created this narrative about removing the SROs. So I'm glad that we are expanding it. And I do hope that, well, a couple of things, Mr. Hughes. One, I know I had asked for the disciplinary reports, incident reports, because what you provided us with the arrest records and of course, the survey that you gave us was, was good. But, you know, we need to just narrow thing, we need to look at things in its totality and our data. And so I would like to see that. I thought that we would see it today. And also, you know, we need to just revisit the, we need to, we know score is coming up, but we talked a lot, but nothing, I don't know, we've just talked a lot. And we're just talking a lot. So we need to just start to do something. So that means whether we get a committee and we really look at the score and look at those policies and get feedback. And when I say the policies, so exactly what Jonathan mentioned, you know, should we revisit the cellphone usage policy? Should we look at also, you know, what is our stance? So we're saying, we don't want to, we don't, we want to dismantle this whole school to prison pipeline. Are we saying, hey, the policy at the middle school level, we don't want to have any middle school kids arrested? I'm just saying, these are certain things that we have to talk about as a board and we need to get together and do it. And so let's, sooner rather than later, I hope within the next three weeks, that we come together, we review that score policy and I mean, the score, and we start looking at policies and absolutes that we can put on paper and then start to share with the community. Because it's not, as we've said ad nauseam, no, it's not just about removing the SROs, but it's looking at our whole school culture and climate and, 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 and also understanding why some of these things are happening. Understanding that if you look at an MLK, if you, I'm just gonna say MLK. If you look at an MLK, we have what, five, six housing projects that are feeding into MLK. And you have, you know, you have kids who are coming from Creighton Court who might have a beef with kids who are coming from Mosby, what have you. So these are things that we have to look at. And how do we, how do we instill, you know, a different way in terms of conflict resolution? So I, I don't, you know, we, we've talked, but I do think that we need to set aside some time, a working group to start to really drill down and look at our absolutes, look at the policies that we want to put in place and, and start making this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. Dr. Sapini?
Thank you. I'm not going to go over everything that was just said that I agreed with. But I, I am wondering, I do appreciate Mr. Hughes for this presentation and the work he put into this, but I was wondering what, I believe, it seemed to me that there were other questions, other data, other, you know, thing that we were looking for that are not on this presentation. I don't know if they're forthcoming or not, but it just seemed like they're all the things that we're waiting for. Also, yes, I do feel that premature, you know, removal of SROs would be a problem, certainly without a plan. And that's what it seems to me. I think this whole idea has been very much premature to begin with. And going back to what Jonathan mentioned, I think well of a year ago, maybe, might have been when we had a no culture and climate committee. I did recommend looking into perhaps investing for, so for the students, so that way they would not be able to use their cellphone, but the teacher would have, you know, some sort of passcode to use an emergency safe or whatever have you. But I don't know what happened with that. Maybe it might be something that we can look back into.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sapini. I don't see any further questions or comments. So thank you, Mr. Hughes. And now we will receive our staffing update. But I think we sort of.
I think we kind of did it.
Yeah, we did it in the reopening thing. Okay. So then curriculum professional development update.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you have a question.
Ms., Ms. Owen?
All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Cosby.
That's fine. I, so I, I want to come to some type of actionable, something that's actionable with this discussion. So yes, we're going to receive more information from administration. There is the 90-day review. We know we have the public hearing on the 24th. But in interim, can we, as a board, decide when we would like to get together? We should have reinstate our school climate and culture committee so that we can start to really drill down and look at these things as opposed to just every time we meet, we just talk about it?
So you want, you don't want to wait until we got a report from the end of the 90 days?
Well, I, you know, for the end of the 90 days, that's, it's a 90-day review regarding SROs. But clearly what we've been talking about is, you know, it's not just about removing SROs. This, we, you know, we have to have a more holistic approach to the school climate and culture. And, and, and we need to, and we need to get started. And so, and, you know, part of that is reviewing the score document. Part of that is looking at, you know, alternative education, you know. So we, we need to have these conversations. And, and we end up having them during this regular school board meeting. And it's, anyway, nothing's getting done. And so we need to come together and have more of a plan as a board with this. And I think we need to reinstate our school climate and culture committee and start to move forward and use this 90-day review, one. The second, look at the score and other documents and data points to come up with a more holistic plan.
Okay. And I see also that Mr. Young wants to comment. Mr. Young?
Just briefly, I like, I mean, I really like Fleesh's recommendation. I think it's long overdue for us to put together a, a group of folks that, that can work on this in a holistic way. So I'm not going to repeat what everybody said. But I would, if, if that constituted a motion, I would, I would second it. I don't think it was a motion, but if it was, I would, I would gladly second it.
Well, I don't know about a motion for a committee, but if that's something that you want to bring up, we can entertain it. I will say that we do have the score coming to us next month. And now it's, the presentation has been delayed, but we, we have to vote on the score in September. It has to be done in September. So I know that will be on the agenda. First to be, the committee has, I believe, finished the work on the document. And so it is coming to you at our next regular meeting. And then we will vote on it, I guess, at the, I don't know whether we vote on it that night or the next night, but the score will be voted on in September. And the committee has been working diligently on it for the last several months. So I don't know if you want to wait until you've seen that to see if you want to have a, a committee or if you want to go ahead and establish a committee. But we need, if it's all right with you, let's wait until you all send me what you want the committee's charge to be. And let's be as specific as possible so that we don't just have a committee with a vague sort of mantra. Let's, let's, let's get suggestions for exactly what you want this committee to do. And whether it's just school board members or if it's members of the public or how, how broad a thing you want to go on here. Would you, would that be okay with you all? If you would send it to me or to everybody and let's, let's narrow down the focus of what this committee should be doing. Is that okay? I see Mr. Young nodding. How about you, Ms. Cosby?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's get a very specific direction and charge for this committee. So that they, they have a task that they know what they need to be doing. And who should be on the committee, whether this is just, you know, one of our little three or four board member committees or one something broader. And I'll, everything I get and send it out to you all. Okay? That work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we'll go with it. All right. So now, and my internet connection is unstable. So are you hearing, getting these messages? All right. So the staff, the staffing update is done. So Dr. Epp, a curriculum professional development update?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening again. Mr. Cameras, would you be so kind to share your screen? Okay, thank you. I wanted to just provide you a few updates. First, we have had quite a busy summer for professional development for both our ELA and math curricula for K-8. So you can see on the left, the total number of participants we've had for each of our various training series. So overall, we've had 709 participants across these trainings. Each, basically for K-8, there's a foundation and workshop series that's about 12 to 14 hours. And then if you are a K-2 teacher, there's an additional 12 to 14 hours that focuses on phonics, fluency and the foundational skills block. For math training, we've had a dedicated leadership training. Again, we do something for both K, for K-5 and K-8, we do something called Launch and Fluency. And then K-5 does something called Major Work of the Grade, which focuses on the key concepts. And six through eight focuses on solving problems, work problems. I do want to note one small error in this slide here. The six through eight fluency, that is just a typo. That should say 41, 43, not 380. So I do apologize for that. We also, very exciting, as promised and as was very deeply requested by our teachers, our materials have arrived and continue to arrive. ELA materials have been in for some time. Many of our teachers have already coordinated with their principals to pick them up. Student materials are also in the process of arriving and will be part of their learning kit. And our math, our math materials just began arriving last week. And I want to call your attention to a beautiful little box on the right side. If you can see where it says Virginia. And so this is Eureka Math Virginia. Eureka Math is one of the most widely adopted math curricula in the country. And Richmond Public Schools is the very first division to use the Virginia-Aligned Edition. So we are wildly excited about that. And then third, just wanted to give a highlight on the virtual learning support that both of our partners have already been working with through, as, as they too have been supporting school divisions with virtual learning. So we have several, several resources for ELA, including guidance on the structure of lessons that help with student engagement. This is something called the Flex Curricula. So how do we adjust, one of the big questions is, from teachers has been, how do we make this curricula work in a virtual environment? And so both of our partners have provided resources on how to do that. In addition, there's a full suite of read aloud videos for all of the texts that students will read in the curricula for K-2 in case they need additional practice, hearing a fluent reader read a text. And also full instructional videos that teachers can use for their foundational skills lessons for K-2. This is to take some of the lift off of our teachers who are figuring out, K-2 teachers have a unique lift and that they have to figure out both, you know, the how to teach students to teach in terms of the phonics and fluency, as well as the reading, reading, modeling and comprehension skills. And then also lesson planning tools that outline really the best elements of the curriculum to facilitate synchronous instruction and best ways to utilize asynchronous. Again, in our math, Eureka has a pretty robust suite called Eureka Math and Sync, which is a suite of tools to support learning. And there are videos, again, for every lesson that teachers can utilize, as well as forms to convert workbooks into virtual downloadable and texts that can be done on, I'm sorry, forms that can be done on the computer. So those are our big, the big updates. Things are progressing quite well. We will offer another round of professional learning during pre-service for teachers who have not yet been able to take up, take advantage of the summer learning series.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Epp. I am not seeing anyone with questions or comments. All right, guys. No?
Just one quick. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that I, I do this and I'm sure, I'm sure there's some members of the public who do as well. But just for the adjustment in the number of, I guess it was training sessions, could you make sure that a corrected copy gets uploaded for reference purposes in the future? Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Then is there any new business to come before the group? Any announcements? Going once? Going twice? All right. This meeting is adjourned. Good.